Good morning, welcome to the regular session of April twenty seconds Commissioners Court. We have a full form president. Here you certify the meeting was properly posted.
Sir.
Please rise for prayer and pledges please.
Father, we hungry about forty this morning. Asking for your presence be made known in this courtroom. That you may gather these gentlemen and the citizens as they all make for the residential Walker County. Father, we thank you for their lives and what they mean to us. Father, pray. Father, we ask Lord that as we go through this court that your will is new. Father, our verse today is found in Acts chapter four, verse twelve. It says neither is there salvation in any other. But there is none other name under heaven given among men whereby we must be saved. Father, we thank you so much for sending your son Jesus Christ that we may have him to look forward to see. Father, that that we realize that our salvation is through the. Father, we ask for it to immediately gather those who may do this day in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I would not space into the republic for which it depends.
One person.
And individual legislative justice. I will accept it. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution under the law.
Oh, I got one citizens input, Ms. Rigby.
Thank you, man.
Good morning.
Good morning. I simply stand before you and I've made this statement to the Lord. Feeling foolish, looking foolish, but he confirmed to me he takes the foolish things to confound them. I know that we're going to have when I. Item five, number five, number twelve, number thirteen. And I said that when payments are made incorrectly, the whole budget is continuously wrong. Especially when there's no addendum. When extra thousand, and I use that as an example. Not you Commissioner or you Judge, but I did bring it to the former judge's attention. When the Commissioners received thousands of dollars of raises, there was no signature page. Over a year later, when I made the request on May the twenty second. It was entered a signature page. But we know and for the record, counsel is present here. I'm not an attorney, but I do know that whenever documents are changed, it has to be an addendum. That allows, and I was just flipping back on last night and I believe it was dated. Make a. When I got it on my flash drive when it was going in. And the signature page was put in anytime changes take place. An addendum is required and I just use it. I know I'm not gonna get a response back. Simply because of the way it was put out here. However, even the state of Texas, when they make changes. I just had a simple thing to happen with a kid last week and I had to pull out their Medicare. And there was an addendum because I raised the issue there and. Just offering resources and an addendum came in the package that was sent to me in January. But like I said, I just pulled it out Tuesday night. So whenever changes take place in any document that I'm aware of. An addendum passed along, making it official. So thousands of dollars that have been seen. And when I say the reports that come in. We can pay for things, underwash, white water express, car washed past this hour. But officially, there needs to be an addendum showing changes. Thank you. And we aren't going to see it.
All right, we got fifteen items of consent agenda, eight, nine, and ten. Going eight, nine, and ten.
I don't have any questions. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing eight, nine, and ten.
I'll second that.
Moving signal, if they raise your hand. Motion carries. Number eight, approve proclamation twenty twenty four dash fifty four declaring May twenty twenty four as juror appreciation. Wesley coming up. Let me read this, you would you like to? Proclamation twenty twenty four dash fifty four juror appreciation month, whereas the role of juror is an important and unique part of our judicial system. And we are encouraged to respond when summons to jury duty participating in one of our core values, the right to trial by the jury of our peers. Walker County Court depends upon residents to serve as jurors to offer to offer fair and impartial decisions within our judicial system. The responsibility of juror service is shared fairly by supporting employees who are called upon to serve as jurors. Walker County recognizes the vital role played by residents who take time away from their families, businesses, and jobs to serve as jurors. We Walker County Commissioners Court do hereby proclaim May twenty second, twenty four. May twenty twenty four as juror appreciation month. And I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second your motion.
Moving signal, if they raise your hand. Motion carries. You got a good pen?
Yep.
She want a picture.
You want a picture, Wesley?
Yes, sir, that's good.
Okay. All right, I went and started my jury duty the other day.
Did you now?
I did. Approved proclamation twenty twenty four dash fifty five declaring April twenty eighth through May fifth, twenty twenty four soil and water. We want to read this proclamation. Soil and water conservation stewardship. Fertile soil and clean water provide us with our daily substance and effective conservation practices have helped provide us a rich standard of living. And our security depends upon healthy soil and clean water and stewardship calls for each person to help conserve these precious resources. Therefore, I do hereby proclaim the week of April twenty eighth, May fifth, twenty twenty four. It's Texas Soil and Water Stewardship. That's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Boom, sang it all in favor, raise your hand. Yes, sir.
How you been?
See. Get a good run?
Good run.
You all in?
Yep. One, two, three.
After she gets there, wouldn't it? You can't have it yet.
Number ten, approve proclamation twenty twenty four dash fifty six declaring May second, twenty twenty four is National Day of Prayer. Uh, Thursday, May second, twenty twenty four marks the seventy-third observance of National Day of Prayer for America. Throughout this history of this nation, in periods of joy and in moments of sorrow, many have turned to prayer. For guidance, to give thanks, and to seek solace. And prayer plays a powerful role in the lives of people of all cultures, religion, and backgrounds, and serves as a source of moral and spiritual guidance. And we are united and exercising the freedom we have together in prayer to seek guidance, protection, and purpose for the benefit of our every individual. And we join in prayer to affirm our course of as a democratic nation with the promise of liberty and justice for all. Now therefore, Walker County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim Thursday, May second, twenty twenty four is National Day of Prayer. That's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Moving, sing it all, if they raise your hand.
Thank you, Miss Lynn.
Sure.
Thank you. You good?
I did.
I need one, but my barber's out.
I needed one, I just found a new.
I'm gonna have to find a new. Thank you, ma.
Unlocked it.
Thank you, ladies.
The number sixteen, purchasing, discuss and take action on review of purchasing policy manual. So I put this on the agenda so we can all get on the same page on our purchasing policies. I don't know if anybody's ever read the eighty pages in our purchasing policy, but on our website, so Miss Cheryl is gonna hit the highlights.
Hit the highlights, Miss Cheryl. Tell tell us what we're doing wrong, mind.
Somebody's doing wrong except you're not calling purchasing.
I call you all.
Help you guys, just let you know, if you have any questions, uh, purchasing, uh, anything, contracts, amendments, agreements. Anything that that comes across your desk, uh, purchasing needs to be involved, so says the purchasing manual. Page thirty four in particular, not at the bottom. It's clearly that if there is a, it says this notice which they're talking about, um. After you guys approve the contract, uh, we issue a notice of award. And it says that this notice. In the original contract from the complete, a complete original contract is maintained in the purchasing department. The other original is furnished to the contractor, so we have two original signatures. Copies of these are furnished to the user department, which would be the department and the county. The auditors department, they're provided for payments. The county clerk to register, assign it, whatever. And then the criminal district attorney gets a copy. Now, I've talked with Quentin. And he said that he's never gotten a copy, so there will be a revision coming out to. And he said he really don't need a copy of it because when he wants a copy, he's gonna come to me for it. So if I'm gonna maintain all the copies, I should, the originals, I will have it. I'll be more than happy to provide it to him upon request. So that will be a revision, will move him off of this list. Uh, I know they have enough paper to keep up with. Uh, also on page. That way, just bringing it to your attention, I think there was a lot of, um, running around trying to find copies. Uh, of contracts and I had all the copies that was never asked for. So also in the contract file, it says an original copy of the current contract and all modifications, addendas, amendments. Uh, the original contract must be recorded to the county's clerk's office. She's. I'm sorry, page forty four. Under contract file. The great first bullet. So I see all these amendments and agreements coming through and you guys approving them and this and that and other. I have no idea what is going on, who has what. I'd really like to be included in all of it. Not being nosy or anything to that effect. I want to make sure that they are carried out in accordance with the procurement. Rules and policies that we have to follow, uh, as well as government codes. Um, and that they're all referenced. I just want to make sure that they're in legal before I send them to Quentin. I'm trying to make his job a little bit easier. Uh, and make sure that that the legality of it is covered for purchasing distinct to him for approval. So in the future, I would like all of y'all's support in getting all the agreements and contracts that y'all call contracts sent my direction.
No problem.
Okay. Uh, and again, this will be revised and updated. It has a lot of, um. Things that are not, has not been updated through the years and I will be updated and brought to y'all for approval and.
Are you gonna? Yeah, are you gonna give us a like a what it was in a red line?
Yes, I will. I'll give you a strike through copy.
Yeah.
This is what she was asking for.
That's the word, yeah.
Yeah, I'll get you a strike through copy to show you, uh, what it was and what I want to change it to. There will also be comments. There'll be references as to why I want it changed, so you'll understand the method of my madness. And, uh, we'll move forward with that. So I want you all to concentrate on all that.
Yeah, my next suggestion that there be a committee formed of some council members that the purchasing policy is the Commissioners Court policy. There are references to statute, but, uh, by and large, it is the Commissioners Court's policy. That the purchasing agent would invoke.
Yes, you're correct, and that's why they will approve it. Uh, that and have the ability to review it to make sure that all of the references are correct. Before, of course, we put it into play.
Yeah, I I don't have a problem. I mean, you should have a copy of everything that comes through. I'm I'm good with that. And I'll say this, too, if we have some particular areas that's an issue, just call us out. If it's us, call us out on it. I mean, if I'm messing up, you tell me I'm messing up.
I'll be more than happy.
You know, I don't mind telling you when you're messing up, so.
I expect you to.
So just let us know. That's what I'm saying, you know, I mean.
They got anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Earl.
Number seventeen, discuss. We're gonna go, we're passing. We discussed, discuss and take action on the renewal contract for jail commissary, C two, three, six, zero, dash, twenty one, dash, zero, zero, seven.
That's what we're going through our records. When I say we, my, uh, purchasing staff was going through our records. And, uh, realized that this was overlooked as far as, um, you guys approving, uh, the renewal of the of the contract. And so I'm bringing it to you guys now. Uh, it is going out forbid this year.
Okay, so this is renewal?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, this is a renewal.
And it's the last one?
Uh, no, sir, I'm so sorry.
One more.
One more, we have one more. I'm in jail soon, so I'm sorry.
All right. And you have a copy of it, right?
I do.
Okay, just checking.
Like a motion, we'd set number seventeen.
I'll second.
Moving, sing it all, if they raise your hand. Motion carries. Number eighteen, discuss and take action on the list of vehicles and other items for disposal by.
Okay, so before we get started, I want to ask to remove, um, line item nine and line item twelve off of off of this list. And I found on my home, so I don't want to sell those. I want to keep keep those two vehicles. So I've asked that you guys approve this list, uh, for auction with the removal of line number nine and number twelve.
Where are they going, Miss Cheryl?
Uh, to my department, uh, to have, uh, for future. Aaron, it's in coming out the need for, and for the county to use. It's not just for my department, but countywide.
Two vehicles?
Yes, sir. One is the Impala, uh, it's a two thousand and thirteen, it's coming from SPU. Uh, they, we have received approval to move forward with that. And the other one is, uh, Tahoe. It's from the sheriff's office. Uh, it needs a little bit of work done on it, uh, kinda like the other one that was approved.
Yeah, the SPU, is that a state vehicle or?
Uh, it it was, uh, I say it was a state vehicle. Uh, yes, the comptroller has given them permission.
To to sign it?
Sign it. I made sure that all that was followed.
Okay.
Okay, so. You don't have a, do you have a budget?
Uh, I do not at this. I mean, I've got money in my budget, but, uh.
I've set aside for this. This this deal, either one of them, huh? So what, I mean, we're talking about maintenance and fuel and.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you'll need to deal with that upcoming.
A budget for next year, yes, sir, definitely.
Had some more stuff.
Three people and two vehicles, Miss Cheryl.
It's for countywide. It's not, it's not just purchase.
So if like the mail car breaks down, they can grab that. IT's car, they don't drive it much. They can grab that, so more like a mini motor pool for the county.
Also EMS, they go to different trainings, different conferences, anybody can use. Uh, again, I I know that the treasurers, everybody goes to conferences, the judges, everybody. Uh, I just wanted to have, uh, an extra vehicle, uh, to try to reduce, uh, the payment. To employees for mileage, um, and if we had a vehicle that they could take, it would reduce, uh, that just to an expense in the county.
I don't have a problem with driving it. Let's see how it works out for you.
And that's why I'm only going with two vehicles to start with. Now, if you don't want to approve the Tahoe, I want the Impala.
I know which one you own, right?
I'm asking from the moon, but if I can only have a little bit of dust, I'll take it.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm fine. We're good, Danny. I mean, I'm fine. Let's see how it works out.
Right now, we're just pulling them, right? Pull them, set them off to the side. Yeah, I'm fine with that, but we did have some more stuff from precinct three that I know we had sent down.
You're more than welcome to send it to me and I'll I'll get another list. I know that, uh, four also has some more things that I don't have on a list.
Yeah, I think we've got some things.
Y'all start gathering them up. I'll be more than happy to have another auction.
Sent that email to purchasing, uh, uh, generic purchasing.
Oh, okay.
That's straight to you. I found one going forward.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll be more than happy to, um, bring another list. Uh, I've been working off of the list that I've received so far, that's so far.
You want, well, you need a motion?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve disposal of the list except nine and twenty.
Moving, sing it all, if they raise your hand. Motion carries. Number nine, number nineteen, discuss and take action on agreement with Motorola Solutions for Mobile Video in Car System for five years.
Morning, Chief.
Yes, for bringing this for y'all, uh, this is for the software side that that all of our videos stored in. Come to basically end of life. Um, so, uh, down here requesting to, uh, to do this. And with the five-year contract, uh, we got a substantial amount of savings. Bringing it before the court.
Chief, is this something that we've gone through purchasing with?
No, sir, I just got in trouble in the hall out there a while ago.
You see, she's already got our attention, so.
Kinda like buying a horse now and sitting in the frame. You can fix it and, um.
You know, it's Motorola, most nine times out of ten, you're going, you're going Motorola in there. But I understand.
If we stay with this program, we're able to continue to use the hardware that we already currently have. So it's a software backside. This is actually upgrading to cloud-based. Been in talks with IT because there's gonna have to be some changes on the IT county side. Been talking with Dan and stuff, but this is gonna get us off of a server-based program and pushing it toward the cloud. Which is government, uh, access through Motorola C G C G S compliance and et cetera, so.
So we're committing to five years, but we're just paying as we go year by year.
No, sir, it'd be a one payment.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir, because we're gonna save like ninety four, ninety five thousand.
Ninety five, six, sixty three.
Yeah.
And you were using your money from where?
Uh, coming out of Senate Bill twenty two.
Yeah, so Miss Cheryl, I miss gonna work, right?
Yes, sir, I'll make it work.
Okay.
Well.
Sounds good to me, too.
Definitely a plus.
Yeah, I know we need it.
And it's a good place to.
I make the most to a privilege, item nineteen.
I'll second that.
Moving, sing it all, if they raise your hand.
Should I add to be paid for by Senate Bill twenty two funds? Should I have to say that? Yeah, to be paid for by Senate Bill twenty two. Thank you.
Saying still staying, everybody good?
Yes.
Yeah. Number twenty, discuss and take action on appointments, H G A C, C J A C board.
Uh, yes, sir, gentlemen, I'm bringing it for y'all. I'm asking to be replaced. And on the board for, I want to say eleven to twelve years, so, uh, I'm asking to be replaced, uh. And Lieutenant Chris Buck has volunteered told. But I think it's time for me to move on, uh, granted the court, so I'm bringing that before the court for y'all's decision.
Where's Chris at?
He's at the office right now.
He knows this is happening. I know he knows.
I'll make a motion to, like, Chris Buck, H G C, C J A C board.
Second, two seconds.
Moving, sing it all, if they raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty one, discuss cadet deputy cap, uh, program.
Yes, sir, and, uh, bringing this for the court for discussion and possibly the y'all's knowledge, um. Not, y'all know our African pools have been shrinking for years, uh, workforce. There's a sign just north of Huntsville, as you can go work to entity north of here and start at a hundred and six thousand. Um, so what we would like to do is open up our African pool into what we've done in the past is only narrowed it down to certified Texas peace officers. Uh, we're wanting to open up. And possibly start sending and looking at applicants that are not certified Texas peace officers and us as the department office sends it, send the person to an academy. Now, that means there's possibly will be some lag time in there. Um, our fallback on that is is that, uh, start working in the detention, in the jail. Um, but I want to bring it to the court because technically they will not be, they'll be in a peace officer's position, it's not gonna, you know, the pay will. Be bumped down in a stage pay system, but wanted to bring y'all's attention that those possibly be employees that aren't. Doing that function until they go to an academy, pass the academy, pass the state test, but. There's a lot of people that want to be police officers that we believe now and. there's a lot of people that want to be police officers that we believe now and, but they can't afford to not have a check coming in for six to eight months and possibly maybe a year at the max. And so we're hoping that this program, like you said, uh, will will bring some of our athletes. Kind of bring it to y'all's attention and knowledge and make sure y'all are.
I I think it would.
Being in a position, not getting paid, you know, for a little bit.
I think it would be an A-plus program to get started, chief. I, and I stand behind you a hundred percent.
Well, everybody else is doing it. I mean, it's just part of the trying to get employees. Nobody, like I said, chief said, nobody wants to do this stuff anymore. And if they can, they can't afford to do it, pay for it, work and go to school on their own. It's a, it's a pretty good academy to go through, so, um, it takes time.
Who's going to pay for the schooling?
Well, they'll come through. Your budget, your funds.
Will it be a, will you, they sign the contract to retain them for two years or whatever?
Sign a contract. We're currently doing that now with employees, but you know, then how much legal you want to fight it too, you know, that's a whole nother beast. But yes, sir, I mean, they'll sign a contract.
Well, I mean, that's the pool you're going to have to pull from is is not the officers because they can go where they want to go.
Well, like I said, I mean, right next to the auction barn, you you go north of here and start at a hundred and six thousand.
Yeah, yeah. So I'd be behind it, too. Good to think.
Yeah.
Can speak for the rest of them, but you know where I stand.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all.
Number twenty-two, discuss and take action on approving and emergency medical task force MOU between Walker County EMS and C track. TA, TDSHS.
Morning.
There you go.
Hi, there you are. I submitted this, um, so we're pretty active with that track um the past few years, and this is kind of another way that we can kind of get involved and give back to our region and the state. Um, Chris has been working on this for several months, actually, so I'm going to let him speak on the details of it, but it's similar to what what maybe does on your deployments.
So the emergency medical task forces, anytime that the state or whether it's whatever, on a, on a disaster, a wildland fires, anything like that, they'll deploy local resources to that area that's got their resources saturated. And we can do ambulance striking to a wildland paramedic unit now with our, with our UTV that we got on the grant. And so they reimburse everything within twenty-five days and they do even pay for if a deployed personnel slot has to be filled with overtime, uh, employees here, they'll pay for that overtime uh directly to the county as well. So, and it's just um great opportunity to help at least our local region. Uh, deployments last anywhere from three days and maximum two.
Pretty good.
We've got about eight personnel right now. And if we can have fifteen total that'll be signed up and ready, checked off on all their certs and stuff to be active by summertime, so.
Good. I thought I read in here, most things were twel- twelve hours during the duration and they wouldn't reimburse.
So anything over twelve hours, they should support it.
So being involved in this, um how do you manage the time? Is it left up to you? So they call, they need help. Is it?
Yeah, so.
Discretion.
Yeah, there's, you don't, if we're already having like our own staffing issues or we don't have a crew to send or a unit to send, we can deny the request and I'll just move on to the next person on the list.
It talks about the regional deployments are look shorter than twelve hours in duration. Is that what we're looking at?
Yes, on page two, they.
Number two, executive summary. Most of them are under twelve hours, so we won't get any reimbursement for those.
So if it's under twelve hours, that's something that's based like a mutual aid thing. So this would be extending beyond mutual aid. So those are, we're leaving assets there for over twelve hours. Um, like on these wildfires and stuff that we had, it was like a two-week-long thing, um, we had.
I just pointing that out. Cause you led with, we're all getting paid, but there are some that.
Yes, sir.
Cheryl, did you get this contract?
I did review it on Friday. I didn't have a a a problem with it, but um, what do they not pay for?
They pay per diem for meals, they pay for the use of the vehicle, uh, and all the equipment on the vehicle as well as the personnel. So um, if you go outside, you're per diem for food. I guess that's what they wouldn't pay for, but other than that, um they pay for everything.
Well, I know we depend on mutual aid to help us.
Yeah.
And if we can help other folks, I think we should do it, too.
Yeah, we've, we've had to utilize
Yeah.
this um several times.
Cause they're the ones that came and set up at Brown Square and all, to help with the mobile.
So that was, that's what we borrowed to set track.
Right.
Yes.
We had, we had a WPU on the game preserve fire last year with, uh, it was made up side fair and humble fire, you know, so.
I'll make the motion. We're privileged in diner twenty-two. See it happen.
Move and sing it all in favor of raise your hand.
Thank y'all.
Point three, discuss and take action on plan to move forward regarding to approve the inner local agreement from with ESD one.
So um, we're getting ready to plan like our summer hiring process that we have. Um, and so talking with ESD, they plan to have some kind of housing for us in the fall. So kind of where we're at is we need to know, you guys want us to hire the personnel for that station first, um, to get them trained up. Cause that'll be six people that we're bringing on, so we need to have some lead time to find the people, train the people. It'll take a while to train that many people. Um, or if we want to do like what we talked about before with getting ambulance to kind of buffer that so that we have a unit to put up and then still have one in reserve. Um, with the lead time with the ambulance is we're starting to have the issue where our older reserves are kind of going in the shop more frequently. So kind of just want to leave it up to you guys. What you guys want us to do, but we need to kind of start getting the ball rolling on an actual game like big forward, so.
So, so I guess, Bill, where where are they going to put the the housing?
It's going to tentatively, and well, y'all, y'all should have got an email from me with the kind of um Lisa's update. But it's on the property that they purchased on Coonville. That's their final spot. They're talking, from me listening at their meetings, I don't know much more than that, listening, they're talking about putting a a temporary facility kind of over to one side while they stand the place up. They want to get somebody on the ground quickly out there while they design and build the rest of their facility out there. So I did ask Lisa to kind of give us a, a a better a better date, cause I really don't have a date, you know, from her yet. Cause it's, cause what you're saying exactly right, you're probably going to need four, five, six months. I'm assuming to put six people up to speed to get them there, so, um.
Well, how long does it take for them to get that plan and a clear deed to it? Bill, you have any idea?
They, there's, as of a week ago tomorrow, they didn't have the title for the deed for it yet. But they, so they should have that very soon. And they're putting a lot of things in motion um, just as soon as that deed gets to them. Yeah, and they're sitting on go with that. In fact, Mr. Luttrell, Steve is kind of heading that piece of it up. Um, they're working with the water department out there to get a water line under under nineteen all the way across, they're getting a fire station, a fire hydrant on their side of the road. Um, they're remodeling fire station number one in Riverside for their duty crew. Um, so they're, they're moving quickly um to have it done. Um, Lisa Olson, the president, is really pushing them along pretty hard. So I, I I think it's realistic that they could have somebody in the fall. Very, very realistic to have somebody in the fall. And and we have four, five or six people here for two or three months that overlaps where they start. I don't think that's a terrible thing.
I mean, in the meantime, like if we already have the salary set aside for it, we could put up a peak truck. If we needed something for those people to do, um, to kind of cover our peak times or send them out there to post on the days that it's staffed. I mean,
Yeah, it's true.
I mean, we can find something for the people to do.
Yeah.
Um, that will be.
So.
And we set aside some money for you.
I believe we set aside all the salary for those.
Yeah, uh, of course, we set aside one-time money, right?
Yeah.
Patricia, yeah, have one-time money.
Six months.
It it was set up as a contingency fund for that purpose.
Yeah.
Get them one quarter for it.
Okay, but I mean, we do have, what, five hundred thousand?
Five, five, eighty-ish. Yeah, that sounds right.
So it was our, I think, I think my recommendation is for them to start getting people on board, because they do struggle to hire, and in the next six months, you will lose two or three.
We have, um, all of the paramedic schools are starting, they do their graduation in May, so.
Okay.
That would be, I mean, a good time. This would be a good time to start recruiting for those positions.
All right. Well, don't we have a spare truck now?
We have a couple of reserve trucks, um.
So technically, we could, we could run six if you get somebody hired in June.
Yes.
Without a place.
So if we get them hired in June, um, they probably won't have the experience to, we are not going to put brand new people out there. Um, but it will take one of our reserves out of rotation, so then we would be down to one and then um utilizing the weight release reserve truck. So that's the only issue with that is that if we take one of those reserves and put it in service, then we're down.
Yeah.
Backup trucks in case something happens. And y'all are aware, if one truck breaks, then the next one's going to break too, right at the same time.
How many do we have on order?
Um, thirty.
Three.
Well, at least you'd have the people, that's the.
Yeah, it takes time to get them, so.
So mine was this, would take action. So my motion is going to be to authorize them to go ahead and start the hiring process for the paramedic crew.
Yeah, I would second that. It's going to take some time to get them on board anyway, so.
And then.
Move and sing it all in favor of raise your hand.
And then part two, um have y'all, tell me what you've done if, uh, as far as looking at the used ambulance. Have you done it all?
So, yes, so we have kind of like a running spreadsheet, but they, without like putting a deposit down, like nobody's going to hold a used truck for us, so we've been watching and looking and watching and looking and kind of rotating that list out. So if that's something y'all want us to bring back, a handful of trucks for you guys to review, go that way, like we're happy to do that as well.
I I think I would like to see it.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. Now, how far out are we on the new ones? You have any idea?
One will be December and two next August, I believe.
Wow, man, that long. It's unbelievable.
So if you would, give us Cheryl.
Yeah, I've, I already talked to her last week.
Deal with that and and just make it an agenda item next, next court for us to talk about that, too.
Uh, we do need at that next meeting to do a formal budget amendment, salary allocation, so Rachel and I will work together to get that set up to bring back that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's Richard, why you?
Um, whatever y'all want to, um, jump?
Yeah, let's do that and get him, get him out of the way.
I don't know how long he can hang with us.
We're going to jump to
The workshop.
Workshop.
We have um two of our reps from Emergent, I'm sure they're in the waiting room. Um, I, do you have a name? Kathy and Brent, or? But these are.
You see Richard Don on yet? He should come on at nine forty-five.
He's not in.
Yeah, we're going, we're going to keep on going till, when he gets there, let us know, Ally.
Okay.
All right, uh, Mr. Davis, presentation concerning Walker County Office of Emergency Management Mobile App, number twenty-four.
Good morning.
Good morning, Butch, chair.
We, uh, went, we went live with our mobile app August, uh, twenty twenty-three. And uh, this can be downloaded either on Androids or on iPhones. Uh, to date, we have twelve hundred and thirty-one Android downloads. And the I ILS S download is twenty-nine, twenty-three. We have forty-one, fifty-four download. Uh, we're including this, uh QR code around. Uh, we've got it on our Facebook page. If you go there, it's automatically where you can download that to either one of the uh iPhones or Androids. And uh, we've had a lot of help from uh different commissioners, uh, not, your dog has pushed it out a lot for us, and so we're proud of.
We also ordered some magnetic signs for the back of our pickups with the QR code on it.
Really?
Okay.
Trying to get the word out to, for people.
Yeah, I mean, there's people all over Texas that from here have that app. I talked to several of them. Everybody I've talked to likes the app.
We have people out of the state that have it.
I don't know about out of state, but I I have some in New Bronzeville and some further south than that, than us.
From uh September the fifteenth, twenty-three to uh April the first, this is the push notifications that uh the National Weather Service has put out. You can see there's different uh items, the way they put it out and and how many they put it out during that period of time. Anytime we have bad weather, that uh the National Weather Service is pushing out uh an advisory, it automatically goes to the app and is sent out to uh different locations. And then the next one is the push notifications that we put out. The different categories, you can read the different categories, whether it be power outages, uh, road closures, what have you. This is what we put out the office. So anytime y'all close a county road or the state closes a road and we get the information, we put out a push notification. So the citizens are aware that we have a road closed or is DTR involved in that. And so that's a pretty good uh item. A lot of people like that. And there's a lot of other key uh factors on the deal. If you look at the uh river gauges, we have it broke down. We have the River Gage at Trinity on there. We also have the closest gauge to us on Beat Ice Creek for right now uh i- in Madison County. So you can look at either gauge and see what, what the river's doing. Like right now, the river's kind of on a decrease. We're still in action stage, but it helps the people, especially along the Trinity River and along Beat Ice Creek on twenty-nine ninety-nine, know what is coming and so they can be prepared. This is uh I look at it a a bunch. Uh, everybody looks at it, just to see where we're going with this deal.
I just call you, Butch. I don't look at anything. I just call you direct.
Uh, you know, it don't work on a flip phone too well. And this is uh uh weekly sessions counts. You can see during the week how many times the app is viewed. Uh, it's not the number of people, but it's how many times the people who have it downloaded are viewing the app. And there is some pretty significant numbers of, uh, looking at total of hundred and three thousand, one hundred and one views of the different features the app has.
That's just from August of twenty-three to December, the end of December of twenty-four.
And that's year-to-date right there.
This year. This is from January to April first. There's been almost eight hundred thousand views on the, the app.
That's crazy, eh?
It is.
It's crazy. I know my people.
We get a, we get a lot of, lot of feedback uh telling us that uh they like the app. They really appreciate it. It's good information getting out to the citizens here in Washington, and they know uh what what's going on. Um last thing I want to throw out. We, uh, y'all allowed us to purchase this app. First year was eight thousand. We've got another uh second year paid for already, but it's due in August of twenty twenty-five. So at this budget time, we're going to come requesting uh add to our budget another eight thousand dollars to continue the app. Uh, we're still being, it was a two-year contract for the sixteen thousand. But it's going to come due before uh we have the money to pay it, so we're gonna just want to give you a little heads up, how many budget time asking for that money to pay for the app. I think it's mon- money well spent. The citizens of Walker County really like it and rely on it for information.
Absolute.
And if y'all have any questions, I'll try my best to answer them. I have the brain that, that sits there and works the app all, all the time for us, uh, but I, I appreciate you letting us do this, and I think it's been money well worth spent.
The company that, that developed this has been using our app as a model to show to other counties and and cities and stuff, and like, we've had a few people from other entities call us and
Neon County is the one with it right now.
Oh, yeah. But I used to go track down the river gage on there on the on there on the N- N O A A site and screenshot it and put it on the picture. But now, especially in my precinct where so many people are affected by the river, other people are just going to your app and they're screenshotting it.
Yeah.
And putting it up. So they see it. Right. That, that's huge for us. The river gauge out there is huge for us. And, and I think the weather radar is, is as good as you get anywhere. Plus it's fast. You just open it, click on it, and there it is, you know? No ads, nothing.
You look at the radar uh, on that and you, you know what's coming. Like, um, and speaking of river gauges, we think we have all the pieces for the new river gauge.
Oh, awesome.
And it, and it will go on the app too. Get it up.
Well, that's good. So I mean, all it finally has come together then.
I think.
We think.
It'll, it'll be the one.
It's been a while.
Seven, right? It'd be a two forty-seven.
Right.
Yes, sir. On, on the, on the fridge, Eric, two forty-seven with the uh, beat ice roots come back together.
Well, that'd, that'd give you a lot more realistic number. That one will then the one up on the north.
Yeah, I'd like to say I don't do apps myself, but everybody in the world says I love that app. So that's all I hear about it.
Yep.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
You know, we'll go back to workshop. And we're EMS.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Did you find Emergicon on there too? Ally?
Yeah. If anyone else.
Workshop.
Workshop.
Very handsome.
The right one right on the homepage.
That's the one I sent. But I had issues last time getting in as well. I don't, I don't. I can follow him. You never, you may be using. Uh, so, um, yeah, thank you.
Richard's online.
Yes, sir. Do you want me to unmute him?
Yes.
Okay.
Were you having one from the word count?
Uh, I'm working on it. So all the links I've sent them, they're, I guess it's sending them to that other room. I've had issues with that too. So I'm not sure.
Richard, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. I can hear, I can hear you. I'm not sure if you.
We're in the Commissioners Court setting with our uh, EMS Director and Assistant Chief here. We'll get started in just a minute.
Thank you.
Kathy, this is Rachel. Hey, how are you? Good. We have you on speakerphone and Commissioners Court.
Judge.
Can't do a phone? Okay.
It has the audio and video. Um, you can send the person the phone number from this new information.
I sent the link.
Send the phone number, but you can't do that.
Yeah.
That's because we have the video.
Me too.
When's the listen? He's been off quiet.
It's pulling up from the link on the, on the website. I just tried it, so.
Let me put him up on the screen where we can send message. Oh, okay.
Some video. Yes.
I don't know where he is. All right. We try and get somebody else on with us, Richard.
Okay.
It, it'll be a few minutes.
Sorry, I sent it and sent it. I don't know.
House things down in Galveston today.
You just send it to our county webpage.
Yeah, I'm sending her the link from what you sent me last time when I couldn't get logged in, so.
There's an eagle phone.
Yeah.
It's, we're not.
It's happened to me before where I go to the website and click on the link and it brings me to some other waiting room. So I'm not in a rush or anything, waiting.
Couldn't tell you. I don't know how to do it.
It's above me. I just said, do, since you're like our store, county page link to your text, send that one and just have them click on that zoom link. Hear how confident I sounded like I knew what I was doing on.
Well, it's all open and I see.
Okay.
About it, Bill.
There's a lot of stress in that department. I don't really deal with it.
Yeah. Options, you know.
Ray Dan be too hard on you.
Did you follow the link that?
You cut his flag when you did.
Yes, sir.
Because she's waiting on the host to start the meeting. That's what it said.
Link.
Dan, you know how to fix that?
I would assume that wouldn't be the right link because uh, the meeting's already started.
Yeah, so she would go to our, our county website and don't go to the Commissioners Court page. Just about it. Just down that page, there's a little link in that third, third or fourth bullet point. Click on it, fourth bullet point.
You may have to give them instructions. That's one, we got Richard on.
Yeah.
That link is live. We've tested it back here just now.
Yeah. Yeah, it worked for me. One of our.
It's first here.
This is where technology gets you, D-Rex. Shut you down. You know how it was here and ain't no. D-Rex.
I know you couldn't.
Didn't want you to.
I think so.
Think if Merdecon would be high-tech folks, they should do this.
No.
Okay. Have a Kathy, is that her?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Did you like it?
Yeah.
I think I'm here.
Here we go.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got everybody there. That's all you need, Rachel?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Ri- Richard, you there?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear us?
Yes, sir. I can hear you.
I guess I'll, I'll kind of start with Richard. I don't know how much time he's got. If you, if you could explain to us why we're at Medicare rates on our ambulances. And uh, we'll kind of start with that and see where we go.
Okay. Uh, uh, good morning, Commissioners and Judge. Uh, thanks for having me on this morning. Um, I just want to explain briefly uh, about the, how UTMB, as a state entity, we reimburse uh, ambulance services, basically EMS. Um, basically, w- we, UTMB, we have a contract with TDCJ, which is the state entity to provide healthcare services. In UTMB, there's three components. We got hospital services, pharmacy services, and facility services. And in two thousand sixteen, the state legislative uh, up in Austin have changed the rule in term of uh, how those three entity are being serviced by UTMB. Uh, which mean we, when we contract out our services, hospital, ambulance, and facility. Uh, on the hospital side, uh, we have Medicare rate, but we gave the, the state, or I should say Legislative Board, uh, they gave exception for hospital services where they can get above a hundred percent Medicare. Uh, that is the only component for throughout the state that there is exception. But as far as EMS, lifeline, physician services, everything else is reimbursed at a hundred percent Medicare. There is a, 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 a policy uh, which is a rider forty-two that exists out there that the state have put into, I guess, law uh, since uh, two thousand uh, sixteen that states that anybody that serves TDCJ inmate population uh, will be reimbursed under Medicare, which is again, through the EMS services. Um, I, I've asked my folks to pull some data for me in term of uh, what is the volume in Walker County uh, being serviced? Uh, just let you know, Walker County is very unique uh, because in the old days, it's considered as a high volume, uh, high volume meaning uh, not just hospital services, but EMS, transport, lifeline, and everything else. Uh, but the, you know, going from two thousand nineteen uh, was one thousand five hundred thirty-one transport, two thousand twenty, one thousand six hundred transport, two thousand twenty-one, one thousand six hundred twenty-four, twenty-two was one thousand four hundred transport, twenty-three, one thousand three hundred transport. But twenty-four, as of current, only two hundred seventy-one transport. And the reason for that is that we have implemented an ER physician uh, group, which mean UTMB hired uh, uh, four or five ER physician, put them at a cell prison unit where all the emergent go straight across over to the Estelle units. All the facility within you, within the TSHA in the Huntsville area has gone over. So as far as picking up phone call nine one one, it does go out, go out as, as much as it used to be. So we have reduced that volume on average from thirteen hundred to two hundred and seventy-one. Uh, so if you say that, hey, there's too much transport going out from Huntsville, actually, it's not. It has reduced dramatically. Uh, you know, so with that being said, I guess if, if you don't, if you don't like, you know, transporting inmates uh, coming out nine one one, then you receive that. Because like I said, we saw a big reduction on our end as far as our claims, what we paid out to Walker County based on having that ER physician group in place. Um, you know, Med- Medicare on our end or Medicare exists out there. Uh, Medicare, basically, it's elderly, anybody sixty-five and above. Uh, this exists not just any county, but in the U.S., every state. You, you, once you hit the Medicare age, if you transport, let's just say if somebody called nine one one, an ambulance, uh, the county dispatch or city dispatch designated, if they're gonna pick a, an individual to do transport, they're gonna be reimbursed under Medicare rate. Uh, so in that sense, you know, the, the state LBB, TDCJ, they implement that policy. Uh, you know, like I say, going back from two thousand sixteen uh, to make sure that, that all the, as far as inmate transport by EMS is reimbursed under Medicare. Um, I mean, I like to say you, you, you know, there, there, there's a profit margin in Medicare rate because like I said, it exists out there. So you're not losing money. Uh, but again, we, UTMB, we don't control what goes out at the prison unit in term nine one one. When they call, let's just say any prison unit throughout the state, if they pick up the phone, our nurse manager or anybody at the, say, call nine one one, the county dispatch nine one one is obligated to go there and pick up an inmate and transport that inmate. So that's, 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 you know, it's been like that for ages. So I don't, you know, I think, you know, like I said, nine one one transport exists. And that goes for everywhere, every county, every city, every state. You have, you know, you pick nine one one, whoever is the county dispatch, designated dispatch, they gonna pick up that individual uh, with an inmate or non-inmate or anybody. That's, that's how it is. So um, um, I tell you, I'll, I'll open for questions. Um, unless, you know, if you need me clarify anything else, just let me know.
Hey, if we was to uh, Richard asked for a contract, it would be at Medicare rates. Is, is that correct or not?
Sure. Because it's in law right now by the Legislative Board on the state that any request, it's gonna be whether you have a contract or not contract, it's still gonna be Medicare. So if you'd like to have a contract, UTMB, I'll have up a contract for you and it's a Medicare rate because we bid out ambulance services throughout the entire state. Uh, every five years, we did, so two thousand seventeen, we did two thousand twenty-two. So in twenty-two, we're running a current EMS agreement with every, every EMS, not just county, uh, not, not, not just county EMS, but just a normal uh, call, a non-emergent, it's, it's a Medicare rate. So regardless whether it's nine one one or a regular transport, it's a Medicare reimbursement because that's a state law.
Yeah, during our last court, Richard, I don't know if y'all watched it or not, but uh, one of the Commissioners brought up Correl Health or Correl County.
Yes, sir.
That you, that more was paid to them. But that's a hospital district, right? Instead of a EMS?
Yes, sir. And that's, that's, I go back to, you know, where I first mentioned, the, the three strategy reimbursement for the prison healthcare contract, hospital, pharmacy, and facility. Hospital is the only entity that the state allowed to be reimbursed at higher than a hundred percent Medicare. So there are hospitals throughout the state. There, I mean, to be honest with you, there are about uh, ten hospitals throughout the state that has as exemption. And Correl is one, and actually Walker County Huntsville Memorial. Uh, Huntsville Memorial has that exemption. So they do have an exemption to get above a hundred percent Medicare. And only hospital services are allowed by the state if they ask for exemption, that they do get that request or, or, or approved to be reimbursed at, at above a hundred percent Medicare for hospital services to provide inmate healthcare.
Y'all got any questions, Richard?
Richard, what are our numbers?
So just um, from October first to now, we've run three hundred and thirty-two Estelle unit calls. And that's the facility that has an ER physician. Um, the Estelle unit is historically our highest call volume. Um, they do have transfer ambulance services there that will take these patients to UTMB, long distance transport, another facility. Um, that is not us. We don't do transfers. We don't do dialysis transports. We don't do critical care transfers. Um, we are strictly nine one one. So basically, since they've had this ER doctor component at the Estelle unit, our call volume has only dropped about a hundred calls per year from what it historically was. We historically do between fourteen hundred and eighteen hundred calls a year at all of the TDC units here in Walker County. And dispatch has us projected to do one thousand four hundred and sixteen calls just for twenty twenty-four. Um, so our call volume has not dropped. We've done three hundred and fifty-four calls just since January first.
Have they been billed for those?
Um, it goes through Emergicon billing, just like any other patient billing. So, yes, I would assume.
That would account for probably because I've got a list of what's been paid already from them.
Mm-hmm.
So if they hadn't been billed, he don't have the numbers.
Right, right. And I don't, I don't, I can't speak to that side. I don't do billing. I don't like that uh, Kathy question. Um, but I mean, with this call volume, what we can do, because the majority of the calls that come out of these units are VLS calls for us. Um, we can dictate what our response is. They can call nine one one, just like anybody else, and we can triage those calls, which we do have to regularly do. Uh, because they are a burden on our system. If we have free world calls holding or we have more urgent calls holding, we will run those first before we run any call that has a higher level of care, which would be a nurse on staff or a physician. Um, so we can dictate the mode of transport and whether or not we actually transport that patient with provider initiated refusals and things like that. Something we're working on with Dr. Tovar to kind of mitigate these issues since we are not, you know, they're kind of a burden and we're not getting paid what everybody else pays, obviously. Um, they pay Medicare. Um, but our call volume is not. I mean.
Well, when you pick up an indigent on the street, do we get Medicare rates for them or not?
I'm sorry?
If you pick up an indigent on the street.
I mean, they'll get billed, um.
But their Medicare is all they have to pay, right?
I believe so.
So really today, we're just talking about rates today. Call volume is of another.
Yeah.
Another discussion. So listening to Rich, I don't know what's last name he called by.
Don, Richard Don.
Um, listening to him, I don't, I don't know there's any reason it's a stated. And you know, now I remember why I was part of the conversation. Remember?
Yes.
When I first came on court in twenty seventeen, that's when I heard, hey, TDCJ UTB is changing. That's why I thought it was weird that I didn't know anything about the stuff before, but I remembered something. Cause everything happened before I got here until that. So I remember when the notification came now. Because everything happened before I got here until that. So I remember when the notification came now, and now that he said it. We're looking at the financial impact on us because it was significant. We were, we took a pretty good hit financially on it. So. If there's no reason to have a contract, we can bill them, Emergicon can bill them, we have an agenda item coming up and they'll pay Medicare rates and I think we just go forward.
Yeah, because there, there were um the old, old contract from two thousand nine, there's parts of the contract that weren't even being followed by them. So I don't see the need of having.
Yeah, I think we just bill them and then they pay the Medicare rates or whatever they pay and.
So.
Emergicon can write off the difference or whatever.
So as long as it's statewide.
Can only write off for the county's write-off policy and uh Medicaid payments, Medicare payments. Uh, by statute, by whatever, uh, you, a call. Emergicon Walker County is required to write off what they don't pay.
Okay.
And that, that's in our policy.
Okay.
Can you tell?
I think the understanding is that based on what's said today and past, what we will be paid is Medicare rate. And then our policy, they would be billed billed at full rate. Uh, they would pay our write-off policy. Uh, dictate that of the remainder, it's for all.
Richard, can you tell us the difference between a run to T D C and a run to a regular house? For, for, so we know, we know what we're comparing when we say, well, when we pick up somebody for Medicare rate, there is a difference.
So that, so when we pick up a patient, regardless of Free World or whatever. We don't ask for their insurance. We don't ask for them to pay us. We don't ask for their credit card. We don't ask for any of that. They get billed after the, the patient care report is closed out by us. Once our crews finish that report, sign it, send it to Emergicon. Then Emergicon bills them. Um, as far as the process of how a call comes in and.
Like time difference.
Right. Um, so the units here in town are significantly better than the Estelle unit. Um, they're pretty spot on, like we get in and out generally, no problems. Um, they generally always have medical. On scene unless it's after hours, they don't necessarily have medical. So generally, the units here in town. Call for more urgent patients than the Estelle unit does. Um, the Estelle unit, when we go there, it is at least a twenty-minute trans. Twenty-minute trip just to get out to the Estelle unit. If we were to leave from here, it's right at eighteen miles just to get out there. Um, we go through the Sally Court, get checked, we go to either the main building, the infirmary, high security or. Um, their low-security facility. Um. Going there, generally, we have to wait for somebody to check restraints. We have to wait for the travel card. They're significantly short-staffed at the Estelle unit. Um, I communicate with their warden frequently. But generally, we're held up in the Estelle unit for anywhere between thirty minutes and an hour trying to get a patient out. Because we have to wait on them. Um. So we're trying to mitigate those issues where I've told my crews, don't touch that patient until they're ready to go. Because if we get another call that's urgent, we've told our crews to leave because they're not ready to send their patient with us. Um, and they have nursing and a physician on staff, so they can take care of those patients. Um, a lot of the patients we see coming out of the Estelle unit are non-critical patients. Um, one of the. More common one is we got their labs back from a few weeks ago and their iron is low, so they need to go to the hospital. That is not an emergency at all. That is not something we should be going on. Um, but we see that frequently from the Estelle unit despite them having a doctor there. Um. The Estelle unit is the biggest challenge for us. Um, the other units were in and out pretty, pretty quick, no problem. Um, the Estelle unit is. Always been an issue because you have the R M F that we deal with, their nursing, their physicians, their providers. Um. Uh, unless you've kind of like gone out there, like it's hard to convey kind of the difficulties we have with going to that unit.
Yeah, you got Emergicon. Do we have anything we need to hear from them or not?
Well, I mean, if Cassie has anything to add, I mean, I didn't know if you guys would have any questions for her until I had her on.
I really don't, I mean.
Yeah, they've, they've been great to deal with, so.
Richard, you still there? I don't guess I have any more questions. You look like it's pretty plain spoken. It's uh twenty sixteen, the law changed. And it's gonna be Medicare rates, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I figured it was.
And, 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 Richard, that is statewide, right?
Yes, sir.
Everybody doesn't run an ambulance out of a hospital.
All right. I appreciate you on, online with us. Thanks, Richard, for the information.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah, I'll go back to number twenty-five. District clerk, discuss and take action to purchase request for pre-wrapped. Prepackaged snack items in the amount of a hundred fifty dollars for your appreciation. That's my motion.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Brandon, you on vote?
Yep.
All in favor, it's approved. Thank you.
That's passed, no one left.
Uh, twenty-six, discuss and take action to authorize purchase of six replacement servers to be used for V M Ws. Our host servers from budgeted I T project funds not to exceed sixty thousand. Dan?
Morning, Dan.
Alright, so the county currently has six uh VMware host servers that run all our virtual servers. Uh, they are up for renewal, so I got a quote from G T F um for the replacements. Uh, the current server that are in place, three were purchased back in twenty fifteen, two were purchased in twenty sixteen. And last one was purchased in twenty seventeen, so they're seven to nine years old and are up for replacement. And uh, the plan is to use the uh projects fund if those were placed.
That's my motion to be funded out of project funds. Second, Dan. Any questions?
Dan, this wasn't, we, we budgeted this money last year, right?
Uh, what we had budgeted, uh, we didn't have replacements, we had budgeted funds to do the uh ex warranty extension. That we have in, in the, in the budget. And so th- they should have been replaced earlier. Uh, when COVID hit, we were asked to kind of conserve. And so instead of getting those replaced, we just did warranty extensions to make sure they were covered until we get them replaced.
So this is six servers, right?
Yes, sir.
Is that all the servers we have?
It's not all the servers, but that's all the, the ones that host our virtual servers. Uh, dispatch has a physical server for their nine-one-one recording server. Uh, there's a couple of servers out there that do, like the courthouse. Camera system has a, a physical server, but for a majority, you know, there's like forty-plus virtual servers that these servers. Run everything else. So we're, we're a majority, everything's virtualized, but there are a few other physical servers. Uh, the courthouse camera system, that's kind of a specialized, it's, it's under I T, but it's not really. An I T, it's not a countywide type server. It's a specialized server for to hold the video recording, stuff like that.
Was D I R vendor requested on that quote?
Uh, it's uh, G T F has a D I R vendor. Um, if it is not specified, and I'll get you that quote. I'll be for that.
Yeah, reference on that quote, the D I R contract, which they, there is, will be procured.
Okay, yes, I will get an updated.
Molly, are you talking?
Um, I have sixty thousand. Uh, each server is basically ninety-four hundred, but I had a little bit of buffer just in case.
As long as it's under a hundred thousand, we're good.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Your motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-seven, discuss and take action to authorize purchase of four replacement switches to be used. For V M Wware, VMware I S C S I network from budgeted I T project funds not exceed twenty-one thousand.
Alright, so the, with VMware, um, the servers are host servers. So it's not a one-for-one, like one server runs one application. Um, and then all the storage is centralized as well. So to, in order for that to work, we need networking switches that are dedicated to ICE fuzzy. Um, and that basically runs the CPU, memory, resources and storage. It's kind of like a communication network specialized just for VMware. Uh, we currently have four Dell switches um that were purchased back in, I believe, twenty twelve when we first virtualized. Um, they are kept at one gigabit per second per port. Um, the new sands that we already have are cap- uh capable of ten gigabit. And the new servers that you just approved are also ten gigabit servers. So these new switches will give us more switch ports at a higher capacity for better performance. Um, I did check, um, I got other quotes um for Dell switches to, as a comparable of what we already have. As a direct replacement and those would have been quite a bit more expensive. So uh, did some research and found a company called F S, uh, stands for Fiber Store. Uh, they were big in making fiber cables and fiber optic modules for switches. Uh, but they now actually create their, they make their own switches. Um, so. The F S switches, uh, they come with a five-year warranty, um, and uh thirty-day exchange. Or return policy. So if we got them in and for some reason they weren't compatible, uh, we could easily replace them or return them in the first thirty days. Uh, but with four switches, um, the quote has four switches and there, there's an updated quote, my apologies. Uh, there's four switches, two forty-kay uh modules, that would be the interlink between the annex and the jail. And then the original quote had six, but we had to update to eight for the twenty-five uh gigabit. Modules to get them stacked. Uh, originally, I thought it was four and I had two spare for testing. But we're gonna need all eight to get those to communicate properly and with enough redundancy with, between the, the switches. So the, the new total on the new quote is twenty thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents. It's still under what I requested in the, the line item, which was.
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one, yeah.
And it includes all those things you just listed.
Right, the, the quote has four switches, a total of ten fiber modules at two different speeds.
Right.
And then I have twenty-five one-meter-long fiber cables. And then I added twenty-five half-meter, which is one point six. Just, uh, they're, they're shorter fiber cables. So, and that would be used for part of the cleanup of uh the, the equipment. Needer to have shorter cables.
I'm making motion to approve agenda item twenty-seven.
Is F S also a D I R vendor?
Uh, uh, they're not a D I R vendor, but I did check, we, we had communications on that. Um, I think they're, they have a, some type of buy board program. I'll, I'll double-check the exact, but.
And reference that also on that. Okay.
Your second, Dan. Moving second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-eight, discuss and take action to update the I T committee members.
Yes, sir. Uh, so I brought this just to give y'all the, for our guidance on new uh members. Um, quite a few of uh current members are no longer with the county, so I, I submitted and. Uh, recommend you, suggested books for y'all to look over and approve or make changes as y'all see fit.
Looks good to me.
Next your motion.
Yep.
I'll second it.
Moving second, all in favor, raise your hand.
My name wasn't on there.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Twenty-nine, discuss and approve pilot program for update of up to twenty-five license for Microsoft Office up. Desktop to the government cloud version to be paid from budgeted funds for financial operational license. Alan?
Uh, just a tiny bit of history, uh. Several years ago, I can't remember, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, court authorized an I T assessment for Walker County. That I T assessment uh was presented to court and as part of that I T assessment. It was a plan to get from our as-was state to desired state. And in that plan, there were several different things that were recommended. Um, at that time, court uh approved the plan and as part of the budget that year. They authorized funds to fund some of the one-time costs that were in that plan. Um, the servers that was talked about in this last time, some of those were some of the things that were mentioned in that plan. Plus, in addition, just routine maintenance is budgeted each year to replace servers. But as part of that I T assessment, one of the uh goals set out in that I T assessment was to look at. Moving our Microsoft Office software to the government cloud rather than being in commercial cloud on site. So what this is, is funding the uh pilot program for that. Uh, asking for up to twenty-five servers be uh authorized to uh. To purchase uh the own, the own site or the, the government cloud is slightly more expensive than, than the other. Uh, these were recommended come out of funds that we have budgeted in our onboard budget. And um, as part of the budget process, as uh Dan makes recommendations to move more and more to the cloud. Then we'll need to address that in the onboard budget.
How much is a license?
The license is.
How much is it you asking for?
Probably thirty-five dollars per month, per machine. Um, and that cost will be offset by what the cost of the. Sir, uh, of the software we have now, that we're still trying to determine S H I who uh has our contract. Uh, a lot of the pieces of the, of the software we have now are billed individually. So uh, we've asked them to give us a list of if we go this way, what all pieces of what we're paying for now. Go away or get reduced. So if nothing went away, the cost is approximately four hundred dollars per year per server.
Ten bucks or about twenty-five.
So. What are the ramifications? You're gonna have twenty-five in the cloud and twenty-five not. Can they co-mingle?
Well, they don't co-mingle, but it's just like on your home computer, you can have a version of the software that sits on your computer. Or you can go with this subscription uh that's in the cloud. So no, it will not affect anybody else. Um, that is not on this version of it.
So the, the cloud version would be the most updated version?
Yes.
So if you're working in the cloud and you get your version and you submit to somebody who doesn't have it, they don't have the updated one.
No, theirs.
We're gonna have a problem, right?
No, if, if, if they're, they can talk to each other all day long. It's more where data is stored. So no, it will not be a problem for uh us to send a link to a file.
So are you looking for, this is to approve the pilot program, so I'm about, so we, like, basically approving the funding to buy these twenty-five?
No, I have the funding in my budget.
Okay.
But it, it is a change.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-nine to be paid for by budgeted funds. And I, I think I would like to see, like, like you just talked about, kind of the net deal.
Yeah, when we get it, we're.
Okay.
We're real anxious to see it too.
I'll second that.
Moving second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number thirty, presentation from F N H Financial on Municipal Advisory Update and Analysis. Of twenty-twelve refunding by Chris Alexander. Hello.
Morning. How are you, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Are you, uh, Chris? I am, Chris Alexander. Uh, I reached out to Patricia several months ago as a follow-up on, on a refunding that we looked at at one point in time for the twenty-twelve. Uh, bonds. Right now. As of today, you have a little over nine and a half million dollars worth of bonds outstanding. We looked at potentially refunding those bonds for refund savings. Uh, unfortunately, the, as we move forward with that process, the rates kind of moved against us at that point in time. Um, in phones with Patricia and talking about having to post your annual due diligence information, your audit and financial information. No later than March, she suggested I come out and I, I visit with you guys. We included a copy of our presentation. Um, page two is essentially a, a, a breakdown of, of what we do for our clients. County, obviously, in the past. Uh, I want to continue. This is this year twenty-twenty twelve, funding update. If you look at the line on the top right-hand corner there, that is the rates. As of last week, you look at the rates, uh, that are uh obviously blue there. That is when we, for last year, giving a presentation without myself, it was a colleague of mine who worked for the firm at that point in time. We went through, we looked at the potential for the refunding. Uh, obviously, with right now, if there was your rate change. We're to do the refunding as of last week, there would be approximately seven thousand dollars worth of savings. Would not suggest anybody move forward with a transaction that'll let seventy-five million savings, what it's worth. We would not suggest you move forward with any type of uh refunding until you get to at least a four to a five percent threshold. Obviously, that would be where we come back to you, we'd say, we think there's. Obviously, that would be where we come back to you. We'd say, we think there's enough savings. We think the market is solid enough. Where you move, build, move forward with a refunding and get some potential savings out of it. In order to get to that point, you need to move down about seventy basis points to a hundred basis points from where we currently are in the marketplace. Some of the things that are going on in the marketplace right now, we've been talking about federal rate cuts. Uh, we're not expecting to see more than one for remaining balance in the year. There may potentially be two, however, the likelihood of, of the information that we've seen from the economics, of course, the last two weeks do not suggest two will let the bear. Um, talk to a little more about the market uh, themes in, in the market right now. Obviously, we've got a very contentious uh, upcoming election that's gonna be going on. Unknown who's gonna be in House, Senate and presidential control after that point in time. And then furthermore, obviously, we're getting, finding ourselves are getting more and more drawn into uh, some international conflicts in the middle. Which is obviously having a pretty big impact on oil right now. Um, you look there in the top right-hand corner, CPI was, has come in higher, uh, PPI came in essentially where it was and then jobless claims came in uh, about on, on par. Expectations, however, for inflation continued to rise. Uh, they're not going down anytime soon. They're not getting down to that two percent threshold, but the Fed has come out and said, that's where we expect to see things before we start dropping rates. The last number came out of three point four percent. So expectation is we will not see any type of rate cut likely before September of this year. Uh, the Fed is unlikely to make any changes immediately following the election. So you likely see something less in December. In December, if you see a second one, there's not enough information leading up to September, you may only see one rate change in December. This is just where the market rates are. Um, and more than that, I just want to come down, introduce myself, talk you a little bit about the uh, refunding, talk to you about the fact that there are two options. You can do the public refunding, we can do a private refunding. We have not looked into a private refunding, you know, replacing those bonds out with a bank. If that's something that you would like us to continue to look at and try to find new options for accounting uh, for refunding savings, we can certainly do that for you. But we will continue to look at the rates in the marketplace and find out and let you know when there's enough savings to move forward.
But we're not going anywhere for a while, it looks like, on our side.
Uh, well, I was meeting with a client on Thursday last week and, and they want to know how rates have changed since November one, when they were in the marketplace. Rates were down by twenty-five to forty basis points. We looked at your um, transaction for refunding the week before Halloween last year and it was negative. In other words, there was no savings to even consider and you were at point seven percent rate. So it's have come down a little bit, but just to give you an idea, the rates were up by a hundred and fifty to two hundred basis points throughout the yield period. And really, if you go back to page two, if you can go back to that, or maybe it's page three, uh, you'll see the rate curve there. And the problem is that you've got an inverted rate curve. And you have a very short transaction. Your, your deal only goes out to twenty thirty-two. As a result, a normalized rate curve rewards people for the longer investment as opposed to uh, rewarding people for a very short-term investment work. So I think that until we start seeing an, an inflection point in the market, it's probably gonna be pretty rough to, to, to count around. We just crossed over the longest period in time where the two-ten treasure was inverted. The previous, and I think all you, I mean, will remember this, but the previous um, longest duration of conversion of the two-ten yield curve was late nineteen seventy, early nineteen eighty.
That times. Yeah, it changed on us a couple of years ago when we looked at doing the refinancing. It actually, the interest rates actually pushed up Yes. while we were in the discussion process and it pushed it so we didn't do anything.
Right. It was, it started, um, if I have my mind, if I'm correct, I think they were here talking to you in February of twenty twenty-two, and I think that within about forty-five days, part of this was fueled by the regional bank crisis. Uh, rates had gone up by between a hundred and a hundred and fifty basis points in about forty-five to fifty days, which is essentially unheard of in our, our industry. Do you have any questions?
No, sir. Thank you, thank you for the report.
Alan?
Miss Allen might have something.
And history.
Yeah.
Back in two thousand twelve, the county approved a contract with a company called Coastal Securities, I think, and Seth McKinney was the financial advisor that the county worked with at that time. He had, he moved through several companies, um, and companies bought up companies. So we do not have a current financial advisor contract with um, FHH Financial, which are really anybody right now. So that is probably something that the county would want to look at is the selection of a financial advisor and a contract prior to going forward with anything. But obviously, that doesn't seem like it needs to be on the next quarter.
For what it's worth, we are providing uh, document upload and continuing disclosure items for the county free of charge every year. So we've been doing
Thank you. We appreciate.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thirty-one, discuss delinquent tax and fine and fees collection report presented by Leslie. Scotty of Purdue Brandon, Fielder, Collins and Mott.
Thank you so much, Judge. Commissioner, thank you so much for having me this morning to present you a delinquent tax collection report and fine and fee report. I have a, a few folks here with me today, Stacy Quatien, your chief appraiser and your assistant collectors here with me today. We work very closely, work very well with Stacy's office and her collection staff to communicate and collect the dollars. Also had with me Tiger Worsham, a former county commissioner in County. Rhonda King, she was the court administrator in Brown. She works very closely with your JP courts and your court administrators and their clerks and provide things of course. And last but not least, Rebecca Rose, where she wanted me to let you know that she was a Bearcat.
Oh, I go eat them up.
Bearcats. Um, she was a little late for the meeting because she was upstairs doing the work in the seventy-eight. Anyhow, um, introductions aside, this is a delinquent tax collection report. These go through tax year twenty twenty-two. So keep in mind that the appraisal collection staff does a great job of collecting your current taxes. For example, to put this in perspective, for twenty twenty-two tax year, they collected over ninety-six percent of your current taxes. And so what they were turning over to us last July was three point eight nine percent. So most of your folks are paying their taxes. We're getting a very tiny piece of the pie. So I like to put that in perspective before we go in. The county does not have a delinquent tax collection problem. We're just getting that little percentage of, of problem accounts to see what we can do to get them collected. So first chart we have is the account rate chart. So this tells us where everything is on the delinquent taxable, tells us what's most readily collectible. You'll note that the largest percentage is the deferral percentage at thirty-one percent. Those are taxpayers who have elected to defer payment of taxes on their residence homestead. So those folks are over sixty-five or they have a disability exemption and we cannot force collections. We cannot by law, cannot make phone calls, cannot send letters, cannot file suits, all for good reason. If a suit is filed and then the taxpayer, we try to police those and not file. But every now and then we'll file on someone who doesn't have their homestead exemption in place. So we don't know it's their home. Um, every now and then we file a suit and they get that deferral status and it, it stops collections in their track. So that, that suit kind of is in, is in limbo. Now that taxpayer can pay at any time. They have that deferral. We just cannot force collections. Uh, next largest section is the action pending section at thirty percent. Um, these are the accounts we're currently trying to collect. We're making our phone calls. We're sending our letters. We're doing title research. We're contract, we're contacting any lien holder. We find that local banking institutions, we contact them, they will pay the tax and put that on the lien they have with the taxpayer. Next largest section is suit litigation. Um, oh, also in that action pending section, there are also taxpayers that we have contacted, set up a payment agreement and they're paying those out. And if they do that before litigation, we don't file suit on those accounts. So we just monitor the payment agreement. So next up was suit litigation. So in various uh, stages of the collection calls and and letters do not work. Sometimes it's necessary for us to file a delinquent tax suit. Uh, many of those taxpayers have us on the phone as soon as they're served with that petition and we work out a payment agreement. Um, it's not the norm that we get to the courthouse steps, but this section represents everything in the process from suit filed, service pending, um, set for judgment, judgment or set for, for tax sale. Next section is the bad address section at five percent. These are just taxpayers who failed to maintain a good address with the appraisal district. And so we work on these year round to find out where they are and put a better address on the account so that we can get them notices. Trust bankruptcy and uncollectible. I will bore you with the details, very low percentages. So those, those types of accounts are not a problem for the county. Next chart we have is the account by dollar range. It's a pretty self-explanatory. I just like to use this chart to illustrate that our system, when we get the data from the appraisal district, our system will go through it and it will merge together accounts that have common ownership. So if one taxpayer owns several different accounts, we'll put those all together so that we can work smarter. We can make one collection call to collect multiple accounts or file one lawsuit to collect multiple accounts. So this just helps maximize our efforts in collecting the taxes for the county. Chart three is the tax year chart. So you'll see the largest section is the twenty twenty-two section. That's what we're currently really working. Uh, we want to strike while the iron's hot. We started on those last July and those are trickling into lawsuit if we don't have them on a pending payment agreement by now. By now, we've exhausted our, our contact. We try to contact the taxpayer at least three times, try to have a meaningful contact, try to get them in a payment agreement. Um, by now, tho- those situations have failed and those are trickling into lawsuit fifteen and prior. There's very small percentages to attributable to each of those years. We just pump them all together. Many of those older accounts are your over sixty-five or disability deferrals. Once those are put on account, they can remain there for, for quite some time. Uh, um, otherwise could be some bad address accounts or accounts where the property owners passed away. Next up, we have historical collection data. I believe that's the next about five charts from twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-two. Um, what you see at the top, the number at the top, that's six hundred and ninety-eight thousand. That's the amount that was originally turned over to us to collect in twenty eighteen, July of twenty eighteen for that year. And we are almost at eighty-seven percent collected. And we don't have to look at each of these, but if if you do, just go through them quickly, you'll see that we're trending up on our collection efforts. And in that red amount that's still not collected, there's deferral accounts in that area. So you never get up to a hundred percent and these, we face this on base tax amounts only. So if anybody tells you that they're collecting over a hundred percent, that's, that's not possible. Um, and moving right along, you can skip through some of those. I want to look at the twenty twenty-two collection. We're almost sixty percent of what was turned over to us last July. And your, your base tax turnover remained about six hundred, seven hundred thousand, but for twenty twenty-two, it's, it's up over a million. So that shows me that there's growth. That there is value being added, that there's develops, developments being added. Um, and moving along, we have some fines and fees collection data. This is some historical data. It is cumulative. So I'm, I'm not going to go through each one, but we have each JP court represented. Um, you can see the dollar amount turned over, what we've collected, what the court is assisting cleared. And then addresses we've corrected, letters we've mailed, phone numbers we've changed and meaningful phone contacts that we've had with the taxpayer. Um, the next is a map showing you the top violators uh, by zip code. You can see they're, they're kind of around the south, southwest Houston area. And the next chart shows the top ten accounts that we have a bad address. We're trying to find the defendant and try to get them to the court. And very last but not least is my favorite map. It shows you where we have tracked all of the defendants all over the country and each of your JP court participated in the court resolution program this year. It used to be known as the Warren Roundup Program. And when each one of them wishes to participate, we send out a postcard mailing, colorful postcard mailing. The theory is, is they don't have to open it. They see what it is when they pull it out of their mailbox. And that is followed by a phone call from us and that helps drive the defendant to the court to get it either paid or, or resolved. Um, are there any questions?
No. You're doing a good job of presenting.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for what you do. Appreciate it.
Number thirty-two. Discuss and take action to approve the resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-seven to adopt the fifteen percent collection penalty to defray the cost of collections of delinquent taxes penalties and interest due and unpaid as of July first, twenty twenty-four. And each year thereafter pursuant to tax code section thirty-three point oh seven and thirty-three point oh eight. Questions?
Second.
Moving seconded, Brandon. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-three, discuss and take action to approve a contingent fee contract with Purdue Brandon, Fielder, Collins and Mott LLP pursuant to section six point three zero of the tax code, said contract being for the collection of delinquent government receivables owed to Walker County. And notice that said contract is posted with agenda in accordance with section twenty-two fifty-four of the government code. That's in form of motion.
Second, two seconds.
Any questions? All in, seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-four, oh, that's all. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That was fast, wasn't it? Thirty-four, discuss and take action to authorize written notice be sent to merger con indicating that all calls for service are to be billed, billed by, at the commissioners' court adopter rate as of five twenty-three, twenty twenty-two. And write-off adjustments are to be accordance with commissioners' court adopted policies as of nineteen twenty twenty-two. Events are to be billed at court-approved rates and definitions are as attached. And that any variance from the above are to be done only upon written notice from commissioners' court. That's in the form of motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Sure.
All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-five, discuss and take action to implement changes on noti- notifications with vendors that have contracts with the county when secondary vendor is to be used. Commissioner White?
I put this on court, uh, Mr. Walker's here with us today from LSD Walker Trucking. And he had some concerns because he's primary on delivery. And uh, something that happened in your personal friend, uh, he wasn't contacted before you went to secondary? Unless you have a, a way to say he was contacted, because I've talked to him. You know, and he's, he said he hasn't been talked to. Also Brittany out there, I talked to Brittany and she wasn't contacted. So can you update us how, how you actually contacted?
We, we go to your yard, pick up material, or have the material delivered, we contact your Brittany at your office. Um, and all these cases where these files were pulled and even one before that, we didn't use slot, we were hauling from your yard. You run out of material. Ricky tells us, do not come back. We don't have any material. Then I go to the secondary vendor.
When you go to secondary, basically, is delivery. Right?
We're talking about hauling to your yard, not my yard.
Okay. So when we go to your yard and we, we haul all the rock off and these other commissioners can attest that. I think Bill had set up something to get some delivered uh, from the secondary vendor. I don't think it ever happened. Uh, when we go to your yard and you tell us that all the trucks are hauling to our yard to your facility and that we can't have any rock because you can't keep up, then we automatically go to the secondary vendor.
I don't believe that's personally told you you gained that rock.
You have not. Brittany has.
Well, nobody's contacted me.
Right. But that, that's pickup.
But we could have solved this between me and you with a phone call too. So I didn't get contacted, I must either.
Well, I didn't get a contact either. I didn't get a call either. And I'm still in question here. You're still talking about my yard and I'm talking about your yard.
Okay. That, that, that is the question here. Basically, the way I see it is when you went to secondary, you went to delivery. Now, when he delivers to the yard, he doesn't come from his yard with it.
I understand.
You know, but.
But his dispatcher told us that all of his trucks are hauling to his yard and, and that we cannot have any rock. That if they're all hauling to your yard, it's pretty evident that.
Take it, you take it for granted that I don't have any way to haul this without asking you.
What am I supposed to do? Talk to you or talk to your dispatcher?
You talk to me. Have you ever tried to call me? Have you personally ever tried to call me or any of your people call me?
My foreman has worked with Brittany on this matter, not, I, I didn't think that I needed to personally call you.
Well, I'm not being notified.
Okay, then there's a
That's like on mine. I'll regret that when I leave here, but I'm not being notified.
Okay, I, 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 when, when my foreman works with your girl in your office and, and we cannot, and she tells us we cannot get any rock. And I have no other option other than to go to the secondary vendor.
Still on my yard, I'm talking about your yard.
I, I agree with what D-Ray is saying because when you go to secondary, uh, Jacob doesn't have pickup anywhere. He delivers only.
I might not even deliver to your yard with the same trucks just like the other trucks. It's like the truck that's delivering to your yard. It's like the trucks that's delivering to your yard is not a contract.
But the reason, I understand that.
But the reality of it is, we need to make some changes. And I've talked to Patricia and Cheryl a little bit to where that, everybody's covered on our side and their side, uh, email or something from the vendor stating that, hey, they, they know you're going to secondary.
I think it needs to be clarified that if there's five trucks hauling, the man hauling, everyone in trucks are followed by the rules. They were followed by the rules. You got five different trucks hauling and cause this man hired all five of these trucks. That doesn't mean they're hauling by DOT rules, any compliance. Those trucks shouldn't be hauling to the county. They shouldn't be on county property. I'm talking about his yard and he's talking about my yard.
Yeah, and I understand, but I mean, uh, to solve the problem.
Five people to haul in his yard, didn't they have to follow the same rules I have?
Well, yeah, it's no different. It's no different, D-Ray, like you said, that then, I, I mean, so if he's not, he's not contacting you, which is, sounds like the problem here. Um, you have the option, you could get statewide or somebody else to haul for you just as easy as the other vendor. If you had the opportunity, right?
Right.
Okay.
I'm not being given the chance.
Okay, so let's go back to eight twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-three. In that various area, we were working on Stoverfield Lake Road.
Yes, sir.
We put in a call to your office, or whomever you want to blame it on, uh, to haul us around thirteen hundred tons of material. Okay, we were told that it would take two to three months. I'm, I'm just giving you information. Okay, so in turn, we've come to your office and picked up from your yard.
I remember that.
Remember that?
I remember that okay.
And then, and then.
That, that's two or three months wasn't mentioned.
The two or three months is what we were told by your person. Okay, and then we didn't use the vendor that you're talking about now. But back then, we ended up having to go to K and K Construction to finish up the project.
Your man, I remember came to my yard, told me that y'all wouldn't go buy him that rock, that he would give us a chance to get into the yard and haul it all from my yard. That's what your man told me.
Yeah.
Okay, just solve our problem.
Yeah.
We know we got a problem.
Emails.
We need an email or something. We need, Ms. Cheryl, can you help me with this? What do we need to do in the policies?
You'll recall when you, a number of years ago, before Cheryl was your purchasing agent, to purchase take it back, you talked about problems you had when you did, when you did produce rich materials. If you only had a single person on the list, they couldn't deliver. You had to go back through purchasing to, go through a whole new request for proposals or bids.
Yeah, we didn't have a secondary.
Right, you didn't have a secondary. So at the time, purchasing agent consulted with our office. We had a detailed conversation about that. Uh, believe in court, we talked about that, where our office gave the opinion to you that you must purchase from the primary. If you cannot purchase from the primary, you can move to the secondary, but you must document why you move to the secondary. And purchasing office could then look at that and, tell, let Cheryl speak for herself, how do we deal with that in terms of whether you actually are authorized to be secondary? You should be doing that before you purchase the material, so before you enter into an agreement or whatever to have materials delivered. This is, I'm saying, I'm directing this to all four of you, because it does sound like that's what y'all are doing. But that was the legal opinion a number of years ago. You need to do that. The law says you got to purchase from the primary. And if you can't, we, we've found our way in interpreting the law to let you use your secondary, but only if you document why you're doing it. And then you don't have a whole lot of this, well, this person said, that person said, all that stuff. So if you reach out to your primary and they can't provide you the materials you need and the time we man, then run that by the purchasing office. Cheryl, again, I'll let you weigh in on that. Run that by the purchasing office, clarification or approval, or if you want to call it that, or just to, to confirm in your mind that you can move to your secondary.
Well, and this happens every year. I mean, every year I have to, to uh, document myself to.
My understanding, it happens to y'all, not just every year, but like all the time. It's a common occurrence. And so if you go back in the days, Commissioner White was the last one on the court that they didn't even have secondaries.
No.
All of you that have secondaries when you're doing your, doing your job currently. Well, they're there to expedite things, move things along so that you can perform the duties and work that you're supposed to do. But you can't just go to them. On the other hand, um, when our primary doesn't perform, you need to be able to go to your secondary. But to protect you going forward, running, uh, my recommendation, run through the purchasing office, make sure that everything is going to set up and go from there.
Ms. Patricia.
When the purchase order is issued, the primary vendor and the secondary vendor are both listed on the purchase order. And when the invoice is turned in uh, to the auditor's office, the, if the vendor is not the primary vendor, that if the commissioner has not written an explanation on the invoice, we call the commissioner um, and get the explanation, then the invoice is paid. Uh, one thing, listening to Quentin's suggestion, it may be that the purchase order be issued for only the primary vendor, and that a separate requisition would be required to get a purchase order for the secondary vendor. Then you have a purchasing uh, review of that prior to the purchase order being made. Rather than doing open purchase orders to secondary vendors that include the secondary vendor.
Cheryl, you want to weigh in?
Yes, I do. So um, we do have open purchase orders, but, Ms. Allen, I'm not quite sure why, when a purchase order is issued to the prime, why is a secondary listed on that purchase order?
I would ask you that question. I would not do that anymore.
Okay.
Uh, if a purchase order is issued to a prime contractor, it is to that prime contractor. We have openly the alternate vendors, as they are called. Uh, because when that prime is unavailable, then we will issue a PO to the alternate. So each vendor will have their own purchase order. And that, moving forward, that's what will happen. We're going to stop all that nonsense.
Yeah, I think that. And then uh, also the uh, we can ask for additional uh, information that's not on the purchase order. So I think between the two of us, we gotta monitor that.
So basically, Ms. Cheryl.
But in the solicitation and the contract that we have with them, it clearly spells out when they can go to an alternate vendor. What it doesn't spell out is documentation of when, you know. And in some of our processes, in one fact, GIS engineering, uh, whenever we go to our, our engineer vendors, uh, we go to our prime, they will send us an email. Purchasing will go to that prime, and they will send an email back saying we do not have that expertise, or we don't have an engineer in that field. Please uh, contact the, the alternate vendor. We immediately go to the alternate vendor. They come back and respond and go, we'll be there on the spot. So it's all documented, um, and uh, there's no question of who will be servicing on what day. But it is recorded. We do provide those emails. Um, and the purchase order to that alternate, so auditing is aware. And I would suggest doing that going forward with the road and bridge.
It needs to be done. I mean, prior to me being sitting in this chair, a very similar situation happened to me and ma- and it's one of the reasons I run this office is to stop this bullshit. You know, it needs to stop. So I'd say whatever we need to do where it doesn't happen again, let's put some.
Your foreman's can send emails to the, the vendors. If they come back and go, we don't have it, they can forward that email to purchasing. And then that we will okay it and move forward for them to contact the alternate.
I'm good with that.
I am, I am always in the office and I send it to purchasing. I have three people that were there.
Yeah, and I know every time I've ever called yourself, I'm going to answer it, so.
Yeah, all the time.
As famous, D-Ray.
I feel bummed to always.
Yeah, I mean, I've never had any problem getting ahold of him or Brittany either one.
But I'm gonna, we emphasize Cheryl's. Phone calls, that's all fine and dandy, but if you don't get it in writing, you're gonna have a hard.
I got to have it.
Purchasing through the auditorium, we can get it in writing.
All right, I think we're, we're done with this.
Yeah, anybody?
D-Ray for being there.
Uh, we, I just would say again, uh, approve, approves the process.
Prove what?
I said recommend and approve. We discussed and took action, so now.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm gonna recommend that we take the action that Ms. Cheryl just stated out in court. And that's in form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Moving seconded, all in favor, say hi. Raise your hand.
I couldn't repeat what she said.
Bill?
I did, yeah.
Thirty-six, receive a status update on the Walker County GLO HUD mid and state emit mod app grant applications.
Been a while since we heard anything from this. They were uh, kind of slow, so I'd send an email to Johnny Green and to our current, um, what I thought was our current grant works representative, and my understanding is.
It changes a lot.
I understand we have a new one now, um, this Roxy Sandoval. Does she show to be on there?
Yes, sir.
Did we lose her? She's supposed to be on there. Maybe she just went away. Okay, um. Basically, from what she told me on the phone, kind of quickly, um, they're still moving slow down at GLO land and on this particular grant, they're releasing some. But ours hasn't really moved as much as I can tell. And uh, so let me just stop there with thirty-six. That's the update. They're not moving much with them. They're moving kind of slow.
So one question, Ms. Patricia, we hadn't give GLO or Blouse Engineering any money yet on this project. I don't think, haven't.
Um, this one's almost over.
Yeah, the mint mod grant.
Mint mod.
But the second part of your question was what?
On, on this project, we hadn't, I mean, because they work on commission, basically. So we shouldn't, no further along it is, we shouldn't have paid anything.
I don't think we've got anything on this one. There's no engineering done, no nothing.
Uh, yeah, no, there's grant, we're still in the early stages.
Yeah.
So let's just go to thirty-seven.
And we're going to go next one. Thirty-seven, discuss and take action, authorizing grant work to draft an email. The county can send the GLO requesting a status update on that.
This is the second part of our conversation. I wanted to know who we call, who we could call, and she offered the services of Grant Works to write a letter um, to the GLO and Mint Mod or whoever's, whoever's overseeing the thing and get us an update. So I didn't want to authorize that on behalf of the court. My motion is to approve the letter writing by Grant Works to the GLO.
That's your motion.
And signing. And to sign. So when we get it, I can go ahead and sign.
Yo, and sign, yes.
By judge or whoever.
Yeah, yeah, on behalf of the court, signed by the judge. Thank you.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-eight, discuss and take action on right-of-way easements for Greg Wilmeth on Jones Road and Gregory Lane. Brandon?
So this is, I don't know where we're trying to get, just the easement acquisition.
This is right-of-way report.
Right-of-way easement, that's where the easement comes. Be allowed. Motion is to approve the right-of-way easement for Greg Wilmeth on Jones and Gregory Lane.
Second.
Hey, second question on that. Is this on Gregory Lane you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
I still don't think you have legal access to that, Brandon.
Okay.
Um, okay, hold on. You state your name for Ms. France.
Last name is spelled J E H L E.
A E.
H L.
Brandon, you know what he's referring to?
I do know what he's referring to. There's a underlying right-of-way that on the other side of the road, well, property, the, the road, property line, I have a map up here, but they on the, the, there's another subdivision on the southern east part of these last house. They have an easement along that uh, where the county road is that is there for access to that other subdivision. County uh, Gregory Lane was uh, adopted as a county road all the way to the end down there. And this prop, this property here jo- joins that road, and this is joining property that touches the county road. Mr. Gail's saying that we don't have rights to that. It's not a county road, but it's on our, been on our roadmap since. Eight, what's the, what's the date in? Two thousand and eight was the official. Wasn't contested in that point, so it ended up on our county road list, this county road. To be clear, the two thousand and eight map establishes the route, unsm- with the route. I don't know if that may be the, the, the discussion is the worst.
How can I have a deed that says my property? That's my easement for only the people. You're telling me that that deed is no good?
I'm saying that the county road overlaps that one.
Then show that to me. Tell me that. Show me, show me what state statute states on that.
Doesn't have to. We haven't contacted one in.
We, we've already had this conversation with Andy's office and, and he'll.
I've never talked to Andy's office.
We haven't had this particular exact conversation. Okay, well, we can pass on this one until we have it. I'd like to set up an appointment in Andy's office, uh, quick.
No, uh, the district attorney's office has no, uh, nothing to offer on this.
Andy's office, that's like your.
Make sure y'all know, we don't have anything to offer on this. If the landowner is disputing that the county road exists, the landowner will need to contact his attorney to prove that in court.
Okay.
The existence of the county roadmap creates a presumption of a county road. It does not, as Mr. Isbell pointed out, it does not seek to determine the width of the road nor the right-of-way established by the county maintaining road. If the landowner has got a dispute about where the county road is and how much right-of-way has, attorney will need to take appropriate steps. How do I find the proceedings back in two thousand and eight when that occurred?
Can we be all legal advice?
I didn't ask for legal advice. How do I find those proceedings? If we're messing up on procurement practices, how do I know the proceedings weren't done accurately as well?
Sounds like most, uh, by the recommendation. Yeah, so we'll pass on this for two weeks so you can get you an attorney and then, and we'll move forward after that.
Hey, what are you expecting me to provide to you?
I think your case about arguing it's not a county road.
I, that's easy to do, so. Okay.
So Brandon, where does this easement go? Is it, is it run the width of the road, the length of the road, the portion of the road?
The road touches this Wilmeth property. The fence is right close edge of the road. This is just going to give us the easement we uh, like we do on every other. I'll pass on this one for two weeks.
All right. Thirty-nine, discuss, take action on right-of-way acquisition report for Greg Wilmeth on Jones Road and Gregory Lane.
Pass for two weeks on this one.
Forty, discuss, take action on right-of-way for Roy Mathes on Mathes Dairy Road.
It's a different one.
This, this is a different, Mathes, we're going to need this right-of-way for a long time. My motion is going to be to prove the right-of-way.
Second, if you get it from the one.
Moving same on, favorite, raise your hand. Motion carries. Forty-one, discuss and take action on right-of-way acquisition report for Roy Mathes on Mathes Dairy Road.
Move for approval.
Same, but.
Moving second on, favorite, raise your hand. Motion carries.
I got, was that Decker in white again?
Yes, right. Forty-two, Andy, better rush it. Got a lesson there. Public hearing concerning plat number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero four six, replat a lot one, section one, and the portion of Magnolia Drive and the Sam Houston Forest Estate subdivision, GW Robinson Survey, A dash four five four Magnolia Drive, time is eleven oh seven. Is anyone here to speak upon this?
We got like three, I think, for sure.
Wade Word.
I can't speak.
If you'd like to speak, this is your time.
Well, I'm the A to L president. We just sold the road. It didn't go anywhere to this man, and he's just trying to replat it to his property.
And if you can state your name. And if you can state your name for Ms. France.
Tommy, one way.
HOA president.
Sam Houston Forest.
Um, what are we doing on this one?
So, there's, this is a, this was a, this is not a publicly maintained road. The HOA transferred a portion of property to this owner, and this is joining law. I, I joined up to the forecourt to replat that all into a single track. So, that's not, he doesn't know a little piece of the piece, and they conform to the replating requirements as possible.
Yeah.
One three one acres, he's still on a very big piece.
Right, it, it does make.
Not much, isn't it?
Gets a little extra.
Any other public comments? And we're in closed public comments at eleven oh nine. Forty-three, discuss and take action on plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero four six replata lot one, section one, and a portion of Magnolia Drive and the Sam Houston Forest Estate subdivision, GW Robinson survey, A dash four five four Magnolia Drive.
Good clarification. I hear Andy say that Magnolia Drive is not a public road.
Yes.
Now, when you say that, Andy, you and I, we both know.
It's not a publicly maintained road. I'm not gonna make your comment as to whether somebody could pop up and claim.
Thank you. Right, so there is a, there are three types of roads. There's a private road, there is a public road that is not county maintained, and there is a public road that is county maintained. What I believe Andy is telling the court, this is not a county maintained public road.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what he said, Quinn.
Either the other type, so it could be in fact a public road. It is just not county maintained.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
I'm not, I'm not better than to make a finding of that. Is you, Brandon? Yeah. Do we have any contingency that we can add to this? Uh, no, sir. Moved and approved. So.
Move and same it all, favorite, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Forty-four, discuss and take action on Gordon P V request for waiver for variance, request fee for plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero five two, replata lots eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, block two, section five of the Wildwood Shore subdivision.
They're requesting the same waivers as coming from the court on several occasions. We're working on it for the court's information to get that revised, but it's the same waiver about right-of-way width and easement width on the lots. This is, this particular portion of the request is pressed on the way with the fee, not the actual variance itself. Moved it in, uh, I'll say one of the free fee.
Move and same it all, favorite, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Forty-five, discuss and take action on Gordon P V request for variance to section B two point nine, section four point one eight of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding required utility easements on right-of-way plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero five two replata lots eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
This is a waiver just on those utility easements, right-of-way easements, not being allowed to be conformed with the original plat versus the new state. It is a private subdivision with private rights, no any contingencies. Uh, just, the only contingent would be upon, uh, payment of variance. We do approve upon, uh, payment of the fee.
Second.
Move and same it all, favorite, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Forty-six, public hearing concerning plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero five two, replata lots eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, block two, section five, the Wildwood Shore subdivision.
This is the actual request for approval. Same thing, that's the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Okay. Oh, eleven twelve. Any public comments?
I'll take, we skip one.
No, no, you're right.
This is.
We're, we're right.
We're right. For all this time.
Must've just turned.
We see some.
You'll be the same. When we get to the approval, the replat would be. Outstanding balance.
I know.
Sure.
And eleven thirteen, public hearing is closed. Number forty-seven, discuss and take action on plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero five two replata lots eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, block two, section five of the Wildwood Shore subdivision.
Open. We will continue on payment of outstanding balance.
So. Move and same it all, favorite, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Forty-eight, public hearing concerning plat number twenty twenty-four dash zero one six, amending plats of lots three and four of the Delbert Robinson twenty-one point one six acre subdivision. Time is eleven thirteen.
Sorry, this plot was recently before court and was approved, but there, uh, after it was approved and filed, there was a, a need to move one of these corners, not move. Doesn't impact compliance with the regulations. Um, so he's come back to file this amendment plat, amend this boundary between what was shown as, uh, lot three and lot four to what is now shown as lot four A and three A.
Any other public comments? Time is.
I didn't see nobody.
Time is eleven fourteen, public hearing is closed. Number forty-nine, discuss, take action on plat number twenty twenty-four dash zero one six, amending plots, plats of lots three and four of the Delbert Robinson twenty-one point one six acre subdivision.
You got any?
The only contingency I've got is pending final signature of, of.
That's my motion to approve with pending final signature of that.
I'll second that.
Move and same it all, favorite, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Fifty, discuss and take action on Richard and Karen Lassie request for variance to section B two point nine, B two point seven, and sections four point one eight of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding required utility easements, building setback lines and right-of-way for plat number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven.
Same type of variance, they're asking for variance to maintain the original one. And any contingencies? Moved and approved, I'll second that.
Moved and same it all, favorite, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Fifty-one, discuss and take action on Gary Hillshire request for variance to sections four points three three, B four point six, B four point one, and four point two three of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding right-of-ways lines for plat number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one, Gary Anthony Hillshire twenty-one point oh one acres subdivision.
So, the request here, uh, they're making, uh, um, they want, there's an existing text on right-of-way that's here, shown here. Um, our policy requires, uh, under our policy, um, arterial roads, which requires a hundred-foot right-of-way. Um, the proposal is that there's a text that has an existing eight-foot right-of-way. The additional right-of-way for this track would, um, they're, they're requesting not to dedicate any additional right-of-way along this text or whatever. Section seventy-five. Had a similar request come before court on two thirty-seven for small track. Um, and the court granted it, but this is a little bit larger piece. Um, but that's the request. Right now, there's forty foot, roughly forty foot from seven hundred feet. Um, it would add an additional ten foot. Uh, if the, if, if the variance is not great.
So, it would cheat up into the, the, the lot three.
Yeah, see, this line is out here. This is not the final version of what this will look like. I provided this for reference. This line is out here, this ten-foot right-of-way is an additional right-of-way dedication. He's asking not to put that. Otherwise, it would bump that front line back to that line.
Is this who sent that request?
That was the one that.
Andy, I'm assuming there's a house on lot three?
So, I got several questions here, like, um, I'm not really for not giving, making them give us that extra ten foot, even though it's state. There's just the growth in the area, knowing that Hawthorne may be, it's gonna be an intersection there. Um, I guess. What role do we play in getting the state right-of-way? Well, under our current policy, it, we have a, we have, uh, different right-of-way dedication requirements depending on the type of road. And under our current policy, we identify the state maintained roads as report, meaning that arterial requirement, which their two are one, it's a hundred-foot right-of-way. Well, that right-of-way on existing roads is generally reflected from an acceptable Sarlin alignment. For you to. Again, in his request, he, he does indicate under E four that he will be willing to dedicate that right-of-way by easement. He's not wanting to setback his, his actual.
Okay, that's how we remedied the one on nine eighty. The guy gave attention, but then it gets him ten feet for utilities and stuff outside.
It is the court, I mean, his, his preference in the, in the very interest of, you know, I'm sure you guys all read it. His preference is that to not dedicate it at all. If the court can't see their way to a lot line, they didn't dedicate it at all. He preferred dedicating it by easement and not at such a property. I have no problem with that. Uh, the other question I have is, is this got public water? I don't want to share, Will, I'm just, you got one acre, you're gonna put a pill in the sewer. It's not digging. Uh, a lot of areas are sure about.
Well, that's why I was asking what line you did, but how, how much, I asked if it was a house on it or not. I'm assuming.
There's a house. This is, if I'm on the right track, there's a house on.
So, did he cut out lot two and three of them already? This'll be lot four? I mean, is he plotting it out lot by lot?
He's looking at lot, lot, different lot two and three and one. Hold on a second. So, I'm gonna give it to his nephew, and his nephew won't end up inheriting it and all that stuff, right?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah, it's never guaranteed.
That's why I was asking if you just plotting it all out.
There's no public water out there. Yeah, you make a good point. They, uh, this, this variance doesn't hinge one way or the other on public water, but you have approval of the final plat. So, the variance is separate from the public part of the department, but the approval of the final plat. So, my motion is gonna be to approve variance to allow right-of-way lines as easement. Yeah. If I get a second.
Second, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just waiting.
I didn't know if you were going somewhere else with that.
I thought you'd go keep going, Brandon.
I had.
Comma, not a period.
Yeah. Move and same it all in favor, raise your hand.
You had to wake us up.
Carries fifty-two, discuss and take action on plat number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one, Gary Hillshire twenty-one point oh one acre subdivision CB Fanger survey A dash one nine sub.
The only contingency here is we don't have a water report that's required of the state or Labor Commission on the water requirement, I don't believe. The new water requirement, when you're giving this to your kinfolk, does it not waive it then? Is there not a out for kinfolk? Cause this is his nephew or whatever. If you're, if you're going, if you're not plating, you're going through the exception process to the planning requirement. It triggers when there's a plat, so kinfolk or no kinfolk doesn't come into play if plat is being filed. So, it would be, any approval would be contingent upon their compliance with the, um, with the groundwater requirements. Either there's requirements in place when your original application was put in or the current. Again, we need to approve this like this, knowing that there's no public water out there. The only approval that I would suggest today would be contingent upon that they meet the, um, requirements of the code and the state law in, uh, in relation to groundwater.
Then they can come back for variance.
They need to come back for variance.
Yeah.
Contingent upon the groundwater requirements.
Groundwater certification requirement.
The motion, second.
Move and same it all, favorite, raise your hand. Motion carries fifty-three. Discuss and take action on Willard and Amy Carter request for variance to sections B two point one, B two point six, and B two point seven of Walker County subdivision regulations regarding minimum road furniture requirements, minimum building setbacks, and minimum utility for their property located in Thomas Stevens League A dash four nine on Scott Road.
So, the Carter's are here today, have any questions. What they're looking, this is found out here, is accounting. Um, they have, uh, access here, is shown here, and then they have access underneath here. Two accesses, correct?
Yes.
Um, but they have no frontage on the. They're seeking a variance so that they can create lots, one and two, and then a third lot that's the remainder. Um, but they have a frontage, any road for any of the three tracks. Even the original. But he doesn't. Our policy requires, whether you give an exception, even if they were to give an exception, uh, for Fannie Grants, also requires that all drives, whether accepted or plotted, have to have minimum in front of any kind of road.
And they have two right-of-ways going in there.
They have, they have apparently two, two easements to access the property.
Yeah.
Needed easements. Well, they're, they're reference. One of them has a volume and page, one of them, it's not reference.
Yeah, so in reality, it's a, it's a landlot piece of land as far as.
Yeah.
We're concerned, uh, you know, I can't, uh, I can't in good conscience make this any worse than it already is. Uh. Y'all got any questions?
No, I mean, we've basically turned down some other folks in the past on the same situation.
So, I, I feel for, for y'all. I, I do. I don't know what the fix is for it, but, um, um, obviously, like you said, buying, buying property out to the county road is great to consider. And if we put more lots in there, that's just making it worse. Um, so, I'm gonna make a motion to deny the, the variance request.
I'll second that.
Um, yes, ma'am, please.
So, we actually looked at this land in September. I don't know, um, and.
Ms. Ms. Carter, could you, you, uh, tell them your name?
Yes, Amy Carter. We bought it for the explicit purpose to give to our children the lots. And we wouldn't have purchased if we'd known this was gonna happen.
Yeah. There's a big creek that runs through there somewhere too, ain't it? Or is that on the other side? It's over, it's. Yeah, see. Right here, actually. Yeah, there it is.
I don't know if there's somewhere you can put it in a trust, something like it, Ms. Carter, to, to where they could vote. I mean, that's, that's a bond me. Yeah. Yeah.
It's, yeah.
It's a bad situation, but I, I just, I can't make it worse. I'm sorry.
And, and we have denied people for the same thing, and we'd love to help people, could.
Any other comments? I got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, motion carries. Fifty-four, discuss and take action on Top Diamond Investment Group LLC request for twelve-month extension for development onsite wastewater permits twenty twenty dash zero zero seven, number twenty twenty dash zero one four six, number twenty twenty dash zero one four seven, number twenty twenty dash zero one four eight, and number twenty twenty dash zero one four nine.
These are permanent applications, as you can tell by the permanent numbers, since they're originally filed for. Again, twenty. For our people, help of nineteen, on, uh, highway nineteen.
Who are your justices?
Yeah.
Court has extended these prior, obviously, just for going on, so, uh, they're back to ask for another trouble extension on the permits so that they can stay it open and. Times has been done? Uh, at least once.
I think just once. Big one.
Oh, sorry.
The property dispute between them and a neighbor, there's a fence that goes across the property that they're fighting over. And I don't, I don't know the details of it, but they've been fighting over it for a while. So.
What's your recommendation?
I think we just extend it one more time while they, while they still settle it out. Courts take time, we're not at nothing for it.
Yeah, that's your motion.
My motion to approve agenda fifty-four.
Second.
Move and same it all, favorite, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Yes, it's.
Fifty-five, discuss and take action on Gary and Becky Taylor request for variance to section five of Walker County subdivision regulations regarding many plats to be allowed to proceed under section two thirty-two point zero one zero of the Texas Local Government Code to convey portions of plotted lot via meets and bounds description for lot one, block two of the Waverly Acres subdivision, Mill Whitley League, Joe, Jose Martina, Maria de la Garza survey.
Oof. That's all.
Yeah, so I'll give you the background as it was given to me. I can't testify to this is fact, but it's. So, originally, this, this, uh, track was in a plotted subdivision, okay? Um, Longhorn Loop. Okay, um, Longhorn Loop here is a road, is a ten road. Uh, let me, at some point, uh, I believe it was the eighties, uh, um, there was financing thing, or there was some sort of divorce, really?
Yes.
It went through a divorce back in ninety-six. And it was split up between house and an acre. Went to the wife and the four acres went to the gym.
Are you Gary Taylor?
Gary Taylor. Evidently, it was surveyed now, but it, what I was told, it was never planted.
Planted.
Because it was an existing by the subdivision and the many by the replat is required in the state statute. We don't have one of record. He came in just to get permits on it. Uh, well, the, the, yeah, the, the the two tracks, like he said, were split up uh, in divorce. They were then transferred to other parties. And he ended up with the one acre. He has a, an easement uh, here.
How, how wide is that in?
Um, twenty feet, I believe.
Looks like at the top says twenty here.
Twenty feet. Um, he's asking, because it's been so long, he's not the owner of both tracks. He only owns this track and easement. He's requesting a two thirty-two oh one oh uh, approval by commissioners court for transfer of meets and bounds. If I have that, that brings his lot into compliance, then we can move forward with the permit. If not, he's gonna have to go back and, and figure out a way to follow up any of it.
This was a, basically a court ordered cut up, basically.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a, a document from the court that actually divided it. If it was done by agreement or by the court, I don't have that document, but.
Okay, it's just what it is.
All I, all I can tell you is what's represented to me.
Yeah.
Uh, don't like twenty foot, there ain't no way we can get out of it. So, um, uh, the motion's gonna be to approve the request for variance.
I'll second that.
We need any contingencies on it? No.
Move and say no in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Fifty-six, discuss and take action on addressing estates of Texas Grand Rents subdivision, section one off of oh, the plat and place of standard distant driveway formation.
So, we have a standard distance from, from the users when we address the driveways. And we don't issue addresses until those driveways platform. We make a mistake on, we, that way we make sure that our address lines up with the actual drive. Uh, we have had applications in the past for hi- higher density subdivisions, generally one acre and hundred um, where they have asked that we issue pla- addresses off the plat. There's a lot of benefits given at the development side to have all those addresses upfront, front, when you're dealing with the utility provided and all that stuff. Um, we have allowed, the court has allowed it previously on year four subdivision, uh, because they have one acre lots. So, what it does is instead of us waiting, we do, we basically use a centroid of each lot. We assign an address and then we, we do a little bit of massaging on our side to make sure those addresses sort of line up, especially in the curves and those kinds of things. We still tie it back to the distance. And we do that because it helps it to plot accurately whenever we move forward and, and the computer is trying to locate where the address is at. It uses measurement down the road. Yeah, so we still do that. Uh, we still track it back to distance. Typically, what we use in the suburbs decide is around twenty foot between addresses versus our other, which is sixty-six foot. Okay? Um, so when we do this, we come to court and we make sure the court is on board with it. Action's to that. This has been requested by the developer, um, and, and it's very similar to one that we did not run long ago, the year four subdivision. Actually, that was the same as that. Um, um, where the court granted us to allow to be done that way. Uh, the other benefit is it gets all those addresses up in, into the nine one one dispatch, sort of like immediately. Yeah, so we, we, we provide those point coverages uh, in, in, and the developer can sort of have all those. They can request all their addresses upfront, have all those, not uncommon in higher density subdivisions, um, to do it this way.
And that's what this is, right?
This one is, this one is actually being regulated by the city of Huntsville. Uh, these are one acre, roughly one acre lots.
So, it's not gonna mess with your numbers?
No, no, it'll be to the center. So, you can still, the only issue we have is you still have like, uh, say you had a fourteen and a, and a thirteen, you can still have the fourteen maybe before the thirteen, depending on where they put their address. But because your frontages are so much smaller, it's at least like sight distance.
Yeah. Well, I know when you get into bigger lots, it makes a difference.
You know, with bigger lots, it makes a big difference. It make a huge difference depending what your frontage is. That's why the, in, in historically, the court has limited allowing this to sort of the one acre and below range.
Yeah.
All right. You good, Andy?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve agenda item fifty-six.
Move and say no in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Fifty-seven, discuss and take action on addressing the manager subdivision off of the plat and place of standard distance driveway point.
We have similar requests to do this subdivision. Maybe we basically use the same sort of general.
This was mine.
This country's approval.
Second.
Move and say no in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Fifty-eight, discuss and take action on Popovich Incorporated. Miguel Popovich request for twelve month extension for development onsite wastewater permit application number twenty twenty-two dash zero three four zero.
Permit extension, uh, similar to one earlier we did before. We've got some, we've got some issues getting all their stuff together to get, to building this place.
Where's it located in? The way.
Orange in my mind.
I don't know.
That's no best to Ronnie. Where's it? I don't know. Your email's on the back. I don't know. That's workshop email.
Okay.
Maybe it can get separated.
It didn't say anything.
New Waverly job.
That's my move for approval.
Moving the second of the all in favor, raise your right hand. Fastest, no work, watch, that was done, no executive. Public comment, none was given. Questions from media, submissionist court.
Media.